Everyone signed. Okay. Good evening. Let's call to order the special council meeting, study session, August 26, 2025, at 5:30. The city does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. This council meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means council can regulate the time, place, manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to agenda item being considered by the council. If the speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule the speaker out of order. The speaker will not be ruled out of order because of disagreements with the content of the speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the council agenda. Scan the on-screen QR code or click the language access and translation link on the council agenda to read and listen along in more than 60 different languages. Use the show captions button to view captions on Zoom. Following the study session, the council regular meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. City Clerk, may we please have the roll call?
Come on.
Present.
Vice Mayor Selle.
Present.
Councilmember Sisneros.
Present.
Councilmember Meliger.
Present.
Councilmember Sri Bosun.
Present.
Councilmember Chang.
Present.
Councilmember Lay.
Present.
Seven present.
Okay. So now we'll be moving to our study session, item 250568. Item A, evaluate city of Sunnyvale issues process. Staff, do we have a staff report?
We do, Vice Mayor. Thanks for the introduction. Tonight, we are doing the study issue, or the study session on the study issues on the study issue, which reminds me of the time that I tried to implement when I was in finance, a cost center to track the time we were spending, tracking time on cost centers, which failed. Nothing like starting a meeting with a finance joke, I find. I just want to thank council. This is a study issue that council sponsored. It's part of our overall prioritization process. By way of background, study issues have been a concept that's been in play in Sunnyvale for decades. They originally started as something called Legislative Issues, which were part of what we called our PAM system, which was an acronym for Planning and Management System. And it was sort of our cohesive management system for the city. It ran through our priority setting process, legislative process, budget setting process. And actually, there was a whole manual that managers managed their operations by that took them through the year. Over the years, over the past several decades, that of course has evolved. And we're currently in a state where it needs another fresh look. And so this really is, it really is an important activity. It's an important effort that we're making. It's important to both council and city staff. It's really important that council get a clear way and a defined way to set priorities. It's also helpful for staff if we have, you know, guidelines around that and agreed upon, you know, processes and procedures to carry that forward. Really prioritization is something that every municipality, city, county, local government faces. We're all operating in a constrained resource environment, limited resource environment, limited staffing resources, high demands for service. Today, you know, more than ever, the community is more connected to its government. It's more active with its government. It's more engaged with its government. And so this all helps to manage all of those various demands. I just want to take a second to introduce Rafftelis, who's represented today by Jan Perkins and Rebecca Hoskin. And they're going to take the majority of the, of the presentation today. They are a very, very highly respected consultant team, years of experience, decades of experience, I should say, leading cities, both from the inside and as a consultant team. So very, feel very fortunate to have gotten their time, which is very booked up. And so thank you, Jan and Rebecca, for being here tonight. And today, what our goal is really is to get your input. We've had individual meetings with you, but really get your input on where we are today. Hopefully, you all had a chance to read the workbook that Rafftelis put out with the council packet. So looking forward to the discussion tonight. And thanks, council, for your engagement on this. And I'll turn it over to Jan.
Great. Thank you so much, Tim. Really happy to be here with the city council this evening. And thank you for your time at the beginning of our project and in the interviews that you spent with me. Really appreciated that. So can we start the PowerPoint? Is it? Okay, there it is. Okay. So I'm going to skip over this slide because, so we really want to get your feedback today. So we're going to do a brief overview of the workbook, but we've assumed that everybody has read it and digested it. And so we'll just be doing a brief orientation essentially to that. And then importantly, saving time for feedback. And we do have three questions that we're hoping to get your feedback on. And then after today, we will be developing a report, which then will return to Sunnyvale in October to present to the city council. So this is our rough agenda, our timed agenda. So we're planning on having the three questions discussed with the city council so that we hopefully will get to all three of them and then have some time for public comment and then further discussion with the city council. So, okay, we can keep moving. I think Tim has already talked a little bit about that. The goals of our recommendations, just wanted to start out with that, that as we think through our, the workbook and all of the work that we've done, we really are looking at simplification. Any process that has been in place for a long time can have layers added to it, have steps added to it. And that's natural, actually, for various reasons. And so the goals of the recommendations that we've presented here today are to save time for everyone involved, from the city council to the staff, to members of the public, to simplify, but also to retain some way to have board and commission input. And importantly, retain the ability for the city council to set top priorities. There's a difference between important and priority. Not everything that is important can be a top priority. And so this is really about setting those top priorities. So you can see what's on the slide. I'm not going to read it to you, but we did use a whole variety of methods of gathering information. And as I mentioned, starting with interviews with the city council. The key themes, these are all in the workbook. So again, I'm not going to read them to you, but there are a couple of things that I think are important just to point out. Kind of the bottom line is that the study issue proposal process is very time consuming and very expensive, as we've quantified that. And we know that council members would like to see all aspects of that process reduced, both the proposal process and importantly, the implementation process. So that was key as we went through all of our study today for this process. So yeah, let's go on to the data and process analysis, Rebecca.
Yeah, good evening. As Jan said, part of our process was to review the data and do some analysis. Certainly, we wanted to look at your numbers. That's always part of our consulting process. We combine that with your interviews and take all of that into consideration and more. In terms of data, there's just a few, there's quite a bit in your workbook that hopefully you already saw, but we're not going to have the time for all that detail tonight. So we'll do a quick version of some of the highlights for everyone. And the first slide is really kind of, we thought was an eye opener in the fact that when we looked at over the past 10 years, you know, the study issues that were approved for recommendation, for implementation, only 26.73% of those at the February workshop were approved. So that meant that, you know, conversely, 73% were not approved and not implemented. And so that was a lot of staff time spent on that proposal process Jan talked about from the time it's sponsored until the time it's funded or approved, that really 73% of that time is not the most productive use of that time, in our view. And then the workshop, really, on average, you've approved eight or less study issues each year as part of that workshop process. So just keeping that in mind, that's sort of your, your capacity average year to year for the past 10 years is about eight, eight items a year. So that's important to kind of keep in mind. Other key findings, you know, majority of study issues are brought, brought to the workshop are assigned to Public Works and Community Development. Those are certainly your biggest department assignees for these. And so typically, those are complex study issues. Over the past five years, four boards and commissions really drove the majority of the study issues, about 60% of them. But when you look at the sponsorship of those that are actually ranked by council moving forward, they were a lesser percentage. It was actually about 50% of those that were ranked were actually sponsored by council. So there's a little bit of a flip flop there between who's sponsoring and what gets approved. Also of those that are ranked above the line, what was really interesting to us is that almost 80% of those also needed budget supplement and requests. So that was a real, real eye opener to us in that you have two concurrent processes. You have your study issues process and your budget process. And really, we can try to streamline and combine the two a little bit and make use of them. The proposal process, as Jan mentioned again, is very expensive in time and money. And again, by proposal process, we mean from sponsorship until approval or funding. We did a review of seven different issues. The average time was 20 months for just that proposal process. It's estimated to be over 2,500 hours per year of staff time. We took the staff that are involved in different parts of that process and we had them work with us to estimate how much time those tasks take and did the math and end up with over 2,500 hours, which is 64 weeks of staff time. So that's a lot of investment really being done, equivalent to over 1.2 FTEs. So you can really think of your investing over a person's staff time each year. And the city is estimated, if you do the math, and again, it's over $347,000 annually on that staff time. So the short, you know, the short summary is that that proposal process is really costing the city in time and money. Also, in terms of timelines, when we look at that proposal process, the key workload driver there, the key timeline driver is really that deferral list. That was really the number one reason why things were, took time on the process, proposal process piece, is that the item was deferred and had to wait that year to the next workshop. In terms of the implementation process, once the study issues were approved and moved forward from the workshop to budget, there were different timeline reasons when we looked at case studies. Consultant procurement was one, external entities like Caltrans or other outside agencies, when the city staff just had to kind of wait. Public outreach processes, when you went out to your, your folks in the public and asked for their insights. And then staff vacancies, in some cases, we saw notes in the, in the, in the cases where, you know, in some cases, things weren't assigned because a staff member position was vacant. So those are some of the timeline drivers we saw when we looked at actual study issue cases. We also noted that, you know, you've been titling the study issues by the timeline when it's sponsored, sort of, or when it goes to the first workshop, really. And that's sort of misleading in a little ways. It makes it look like something's going to be done when really it hasn't even been approved for action. So that's a little misleading just being on the list. And then also, it could be some expectations about how long the process takes. It makes it look like it's, you know, not been done by staff for those years. And really, they haven't even been given approval to do it. So there's some issues there in terms of titling that we would talk about. In terms of implementation timeline data, staff had done their own internal process review at one point, and they did a comprehensive review of all 44 study issues on the table at that point in time. And they found average days to completion from funding to completion of that study issue, the average for those 44 was about 762 days. So that's just over two years. We did a smaller sample and came up with a little longer than that, just about three years. So it's between two, three years, depending on the sample size of what you pull. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jan to talk about other cities.
Yeah. So as part of our study, we decided to look at several other cities. And every city treats their priority setting differently. There are some cities that do it very well and other cities, not so well. Some cities have experiences where, you know, every Tuesday, there's, there's a new item before the staff. There are cities that are very disciplined in, in setting priorities and they stick to those priorities. We're very familiar with, with cities that do it well. And so we wanted to share with you some of those experiences. So these are our cities that we're particularly familiar with. Each one of them has, has a process for setting priorities either annually or every two years. Some of them have a longer range strategic plan. And they have two things in common. They have discipline in that once they set those priorities, they really stick to them. And they have focus. They really stay focused on that. You know, some cities, well, I'll take Roner Park as an example, smaller city, but they're doing something very ambitious. They're creating a downtown from scratch. The only way they're ever going to do that is if they absolutely have 100% focus. So, but every, every city has a unique, of these samples, has a unique way of setting priorities, but they all have these characteristics in common. They have discipline once they set the priorities and they do stay focused. They also have very streamlined processes. And so we looked at, as we've looked at, at your proposal process, which we know has changed over the years to what it is now, it's very complicated compared to these other cities, you know, no doubt about that. Those other cities do not have their boards and commissions involved. It's, it's a very different role with boards and commissions, take direction from the city council and do not in those other cities. And it's actually very unusual for, for cities to have their boards and commissions propose work for city staff. That's, that's not a typical role of a, of a board or commission. And then there's, in those priorities, as they are set, there's a real conscious attention to the ongoing work of the city and what the staff capacity is and, you know, how, how many projects can be done. So it's very intentional in, in how those priorities are set. All of those cities, in fact, you know, every city has a way that council members can bring issues before them outside of that annual process. But one of the characteristics of these, of these eight cities is that that's used very sparingly. And typically, it is to the city manager, you know, if there's some issue in a neighborhood that needs to be addressed. And if it's operational and simply can be addressed, then it is addressed. If it's consistent with ongoing policy and, and there's staff capacity to address it, safety issue, for instance, then, then it is. If it's something outside of that that will require resources, then it can go to the city council, but it's used very sparingly. And the city managers typically will, will say, okay, if we're going to do that, what's going to come off? You know, what, what is going to be deferred or what, what's going to take a backseat in order for us to do that? So it's, it's very, very disciplined. So those are kind of the key characteristics of those case study cities. The key differences between those cities and Sunnyvale that we saw, I mean, there are many things that are similar. You know, you're very professional, you have master plans, long range plans. You do long range financial forecasting, you, you're ahead of the game in, in many regards. But in terms of setting priorities, your, your process is much more complicated and time consuming than, than these other cities. And as I mentioned, none of the other cities invite their boards and commissions to, to suggest projects or, or policies. And then just in terms of best practices, as a council manager, form of government, as Sunnyvale has, has been, and these other cities are, is very traditional roles and you're very familiar with these. And then just for the council, just to stay focused on the setting policy, on adopting the budget and taking that citywide perspective in establishing the long range plans, all of which you have, you have those master plans. And, and looking to the city manager to manage the operations, which is the city manager's job. And to look to the city manager to, to determine what are the resources that are really available to, to carry out the, the services and, and new projects. And then with the boards and commissions, there are, there are some cities, and I know Sunnyvale does this, that has a work plan that's approved by the city council. And that is absolutely a best practice. And that's, that's something that, that hopefully would, would continue here. So for success, the case study cities do minimize adding new projects. Once they establish their priorities for the year or for two years and they, they stay focused, they do have that full council support. And then if something is going to be added, then choices, what drops off or perhaps is delayed. And there are some best practice criteria that can be applied for adding projects. And these would be ones outside of what the city manager might be able to integrate into operations. And, you know, if there's an emergency or sometimes there's new outside funding that would be an opportunity that's time sensitive, you just need to take a hold of that and, and go for it, or new multi-agency opportunity, certainly a community safety issue, or always the changes in laws or mandates. You know, all of those situations would warrant something new to occur. You live in a dynamic world. We are all in a dynamic community and things happen. And so nothing is absolutely set in concrete, but having some best practice criteria applied allows that discipline to occur. So now we'd like to just highlight, and we know that you've read them, you know, the preliminary strategies for improvement, and we're really eager to get your feedback when we get to the questions. Just that the overall context is that, that the study issues are part of a much bigger system. 95% of your budget, your staff time goes to ongoing service delivery, implementation of your master plans, implementation of your capital improvement program. That's where the vast majority of your staff time goes. And so the study issues are a way to ensure that council top priorities can get set and then get integrated into the work of the organization.
So when we took everything into account, all of the work we've done and went through our methodology, these are some of the, the key observations. And again, you've seen them already in your workbook, but very briefly, you know, the time spent on that proposal process could be better spent on implementation of, of items, in our view. We feel that that's a lot of staff time spent when 75% of the items don't go forward. And we'd rather convert that to productive time to get some more things done. Terminology can be confusing and we have some suggestions on that coming up in some other slides in terms of, you know, clarifying the process through terminology. Tracking and visibility could be easier and better, and we'll talk about that as well. Again, trying to streamline things, trying to consolidate the two forms you have for a budget item as well as a study issue item, so we can do some, some consolidation there. Some items can just be done and handled by the city manager and or the city attorney or department staff, you know, with city manager's approval. So, you know, there's an option there just to, if, if there is capacity available, that can, that can happen. And finally, the city has elements that could be pulled together already into a strategic plan. You've got a lot of the pieces and we just think, you know, that'd be helpful to pull it all together into one overarching strategic plan that could really drive everything and align all your priorities together. So with that, we're going to move into our, excuse me. Let's try to get that. There we go. So we've come up with 14 different strategies that we're going to suggest and, and talk with you about tonight. That's why we want to get your feedback. And we really kind of broke them up into three different parts of the process, if you will. We started talking about that proposal process, which is that front end from sponsorship until approval or funding. Then we got into the completion piece from funding or approval until the study issue is, work is done. And then finally, we have some just other related prioritization and resourcing ideas in terms of some improvement ideas. So starting on the proposal process, that's the vast majority of our, of our thoughts and strategies. Again, it would be eliminating most, I apologize. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. It'd be eliminating most of the study issue papers that would go for that proposal process. And we'd streamline that and we'll talk about that. Reviewing the board and commission input process, we have some options on that. We want to discuss that with you and get your thoughts and feedback for sure. We would eliminate, suggest eliminating the January public hearing in favor of an expanded kind of refocused February workshop. We would also modify some terminology and, and we'll talk about that with some recommendation suggestions on another slide. We would definitely eliminate the deferral of study issues, and that's a new concept, but the idea is to keep them fresh each year to year. They can carry over individually. Folks want to re, you know, bring them back to life each year, we can do that way. We wouldn't keep a deferral list. We'd create that one form by streamlining the two concurrent processes. And then we would create a clear description of council priority projects so that those would be recommended in the budget. And we're going to go through all of these in more detail in a minute. In terms of the completion process, the strategies we have there would be to sort of establish a dashboard with much more detail. And you already have a lot on your website and we just want to expand that more. In particular, providing a little more tracking detail on the completion side of things once it's approved, a little more detail on what's happening. Providing some targeted update discussions with council. We heard that very clearly from your interviews, that you want to know what's happening once it's approved. And so we think that should be built in. And finally, identifying some key tasks or phases that would, you know, be good for that tracking staff time. So we really want to make sure that process of completion has a little more insight and transparency. And then I'm going to turn it over to Jan.
And then with the third one, we think that it's not necessary to, to review your strategic priorities, which we're recommending, you call strategic goals, every year, but every couple of years would be sufficient for that because those are longer range in nature. And then comprehensive strategic plan, you have all the elements. And, and so tying all that together so that when you do set your annual priorities, they're tied to something that's bigger and that is more comprehensive and that, that is pulled together. And then finally, having an agreed upon set of criteria for adding projects mid-year, we think would be helpful. And then just the terminology changes we're recommending, instead of study issue, we think it'd be more descriptive to call them council priority projects. Because in looking at them, they're projects. As we looked at your list, they're really all projects. They have a beginning, they have an end. And so that would be our recommendation. And by putting priority in that, it makes it clear that those are council priorities. So we, we're recommending that. Instead of strategic priorities that you have now, call those strategic goals. Those are longer range in nature, they're broader in terms of the outcomes. And then eliminate the reference to above the line and below the line. We heard in both the surveys with the boards and commissions and, and with others, that it's a little opaque. What does that mean? But rather, it's, it's the city manager's recommendation in the budget. And, and that's the more standard terminology. And then for the February workshop, we think that it would be beneficial to have the larger framework so that rather than just focusing on, on the study issues or council priority projects, put it in context of what are all of the, the major projects that are underway or approved by the city council so that you have that larger framework, plus a financial update and guidance from the city manager on capacity. And then review those new proposals from the city council. And then after that, after the city council establishes by majority vote, a subset of those new proposals, that then staff would prepare a report, report on each of those. That's the only time there would be a staff report prepared. The city manager would then would use that information to prepare his recommendations for the budget. And that would return to the council in May. for the budget, and that would return to the council in May.
So one of the questions we definitely have tonight, and we want to get your feedback on, is the role of boards and commissions and getting their input. We know that's a significant piece of that proposal process now. And we have two options we'd like to pose, and we'll discuss with you later on. The first option is really reflective of what the processes in other cities, the case studies, if you will, that Jan talked about. And that's really where, you know, the board and commission members don't submit forms for study issues. They can suggest it individually to their council members, like, you know, any other resident of the city, and basically, it's very consistent with other city practices. There's no discussion or ranking of study issues, council priority projects, at their meetings. And then the council members would decide whether to create proposals from their suggestions. That's really, you know, you're taking the input from them, and then you would make the decision whether those merit becoming actual proposals. The council members would decide whether to include those and would be given up to three proposals a year, given that there are seven of you. That's a maximum of 21 proposals per year going forward. And so that's very reasonable, given that only, on average, eight or less are, have been approved each year. So you're still getting a lot of good ideas, you're getting ideas up from the board and commission, but there's no formal process or submittal on their end. And so we think that that is a first option for board and commission input. Alternatively, we have a second option that we also want to run by you. And then that's where each board and commission is allowed to make one submittal per year. So the group, as a group, the advisory boards would each work together and identify one submittal by majority vote that they would want to put forth. Staff would then write a short description of what the scope is of that study issue or council priority project for council discussion at the February workshop. So then that would be brought forth. That would be up to 10 proposals, one from each of the boards and commissions. And then the number of proposals then submitted by council would be dropped to two per year, so then the total would still be 24. Seven council members times two, 14, plus one each from the board and commission is 24, okay? Again, it's just another way to give them some formal input, but it minimizes it in terms of numbers, because again, your baseline capacity over the years has been eight or less approved every year. So those are the two options we're going to be talking to you about and getting your feedback on in terms of board and commission impact. So the summary of our proposed revised process overall, again, very briefly, there'd be one form for both sort of budget and council priority projects submitted by council members in January, and then be either two or three, depending on how we go with the board and commissions. The form would be reviewed by the city manager to determine, you know, whether that can be done some other way and just absorbed with current staff and a sort of just do it like you talk about now. But there would be no January public hearing. We'd get rid of that in favor of this reframed February workshop. Staff would prepare the reports on that subset of approved items, so that it reduces the work for them and the timelines. And those would be the ones with majority council support after the February workshop. The council would make their budget, his budget recommendations based upon those reports, that subset. And then there'd be final determination made with budget adoption in June, so it really becomes part of your budget process. Nothing would be deferred, and then we'd start fresh in the next year. And throughout the year, city manager's office would really be responsible for the tracking of progress and providing a status updates to the council, so that, again, there's that transparency and accountability piece of the pie. Very, very, in big summary here as a little calendar, if you will, but this really is a timeline, and essentially, January through June is the streamlined process. We've really reduced that proposal process from January, when you're going to bring forth those proposals, to June, when they're approved by the budget. And then we really set aside July through December for sort of the implementation piece of things. So giving staff some focused time to really work on implementing the ones that have been approved and move forward.
Okay, so now we have questions for the city council. And I think I'll turn it over to the vice mayor. And we've posed three questions, and of course, your comments are whatever your comments are on any aspect of our workbook and the work that we've done, but specifically, we think it would be useful to get your comments on these three questions at least. So I'll turn it over to the vice mayor.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, Vice Mayor. If I could just add just two quick comments. First of all, I wanted to take an opportunity, I didn't do it at the beginning, to recognize a couple of staff members who have been involved in this project. Assistant City Manager Sarah Johnson-Rios has been the lead on this project and has done an outstanding job working with Jan and Rebecca to move this project along in a timely fashion, so thank you, Sarah, for that. And also Michelle Zarai, who's a senior management analyst in our office, who you're all familiar with through legislative advocacy, also supported this project, so I want to thank her as well. And I just want to say, as council considers these things, to keep in mind not only our organizational capacity from the standpoint of staff and what we can get done, but the organizational capacity of council to evaluate here and make decisions on these new policy items. So, for example, say if we do six, seven, 10 a year, that potentially means one a month, almost, if you kind of take out the holiday months is really, you know, viable months for council meetings. You've got pretty close to capacity there. And also the community's capacity to handle public outreach meetings, and a lot of these turn into new programs and services or new projects, all of that, just sort of that broader capacity, thinking of the community as part of the organization and what the community can take on in terms of change. As staff, we hear it all the time, and council does too, right? Why did you take that parking there? Why did you, you know, build this thing over here? Why did you do this? Like, change is hard for the community as well, so we want to keep that in mind. And with that, I'll turn it over to the vice mayor. Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we're pretty much on schedule. So we have 10 minutes for all seven of us to answer all the questions. So for this question one, be succinct, and then we'll go on to question two, be succinct, and then question three, you'll have more time. So anyway, raise your hand. So our first council member is Councilmember Mellinger. So for this whole time on question one, we have 10 minutes for the whole seven of us.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Vice Mayor, and thank you very much for an excellent presentation and workbook. I was extremely impressed with the depth of your analysis and the content involved. So the question here is, what did you hear from the case study cities that can be applied here? And without, you know, there are differences between each of them, but it feels like those differences are fairly small. Is that in line with your assessment?
I would agree.
And it seems like for each of these cities, council members get basically a big three that they get to push for each year, or something along those lines. Is that sort of a fair assessment?
No, I would say it, hmm, some yes and some no, but there is a defined process for each one, yeah.
Yeah. And so I think, first of all, yes, there needs to be a defined process. I think creating some limitations helps to focus things and to prioritize. You know, limitations and restrictions are often the birth mother of creativity, right? And what I'm also seeing is that there, none of these cities have the extremely heavy weight upfront process that we do.
No.
And so all of those things resonate with me, is that let's cut this up, this very heavy upfront process and focus on actually getting things done and making sure, you know, something else that I will say is, all of these cities tie their council priority setting to existing strategic priorities. Right? And occasionally, there will be something that comes up that is important that doesn't quite fit those strategic priorities, but that should be the exception rather than the rule. So I guess to sum up, there's some pretty clear themes here, and I think we should be more like them.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Shrinavasun.
Thank you. Thanks for an excellent presentation. What I really liked in the case study cities is the streamlined process, which you succinctly say, and then in our case, about some, more than 75% of our front-end work is wasted, because it's not above the line or whatever, right? Which is not only a drain on the staff time, but also boards and commissions' time. I have sat on the boards and commissions, where they are discussing all these priorities, which doesn't make into the, whatever, above line or something like that. I also liked your statement about differing items, which seems to be the problem we have, that is, we push it, anything below the line to defer instead of dropping, which means that for multiple years, it's all in the deferred column, nobody knows when it will be taken up. So I like that. I especially like the prioritization and then any project aligning with our strategic priorities. That's what looks like case studies cities are doing. We do a lot of projects which are slightly aligned to our strategic priorities, but it's not. And then as our city manager said, there is a study issue fatigue, project fatigue from not only the residents, why so many changes in a year, why my street is being affected? And then even the council, we work 40 meetings a day, year, those are the things. And then I also like the boards and the hours you mentioned, about 1.2 full-time employees kind of hours, and then you also mentioned some dollar figure. Those are the same numbers, right? Or is that, am I reading it incorrectly or what?
It's difficult to say they're the same, because there's averages incurring in there, but, but yeah.
One question I had on the case study cities, you said that they adhere to multi-year basis. What does that mean? That is, if a study issue or a project goes multiple years, how do they handle that?
Yeah. For many of them, they may have exactly the same priorities for year one, year two, year three, because they haven't finished them. And so they don't want to add new things, because they're staying focused on those priorities. Or they may have, let's take Elk Grove as an example, they have a priority project list that they review every two years. Some things are done, they get dropped off, and then they're adding some things to it. But there's certainly a multi-year effort. Other cities do it, of those eight, do it slightly differently than that, but they may have the same set of priorities going, you know, several years.
Right. Very good, thank you. One last question. So the projects they decide, which is a slightly separate process than the priorities, how do they connect with the priorities, the strategic priorities? Do they have a separate discussion? For example, there are N projects, and then typically five to six priorities. Do they connect each one to the priorities, or how does that work?
Are you asking, do they connect the specific priority projects to something bigger?
Correct.
Yeah, and they typically do, yeah, to a strategic plan or to broad goals, like you have right now, that you're calling strategic priorities. But they, these, the individual priority projects would tie to those, that, so they tie to something. Yes, they do tie to something.
Those are really interesting, yeah, I know. Those are interesting things we can definitely take from our strategic, sorry, case study cities. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Sisnaros.
Yes, thank you. As a government nerd and as a policy nerd, this is a real treat. Because you, this is what you really like, go to school for, is that detailed process. And I just want to say that I'm very proud to be part of a body who is willing to look at how we've always done things, and just because we're well-run, things are going okay, we're like, actually, is this the best way we can do this? Because we think we can deliver for our constituents even better than this. So I'm really proud to be part of this process. It's tough, but this is some really great stuff and really helpful feedback. The length of the workshops is another issue that we've grappled with. I mean, these are like 12-hour days, and not only is that hard for community members to access, at a certain point, there's a fatigue on the decision-making side too. You're getting a lot of information in one day. So I just wanted to get your thoughts on that of eliminating a whole workshop. Do you feel that streamlining the process would allow for us still to have a day that is accessible both to the public and to the decision-makers to be able to really digest all of that material within one day?
The question is by eliminating the January public hearing?
Yes.
Well, the February workshop would still be open to the public.
Oh, yes, of course.
Of course, I mean, obviously. And they would be able to voice their interests with regards to any projects that they would like the city council to consider. And then there would be another opportunity in May, at the May budget workshop. And there may be, I don't know if there are any others between then, no. Yeah.
But also, your numbers will be dropping, like we talked about. If you were to do kind of the approach we're talking about, you know, you've averaged 37, 33 to 37 a year at your workshop, it's going to drop to 21 to 24. That gives you a little more time. I mean, again, you know, you'd have to judge yourselves the day, you know, length of the workshop in terms of that, but hopefully that would help.
I guess I'll ask the city manager, does this jive with our kind of goals to focus our workshops and have that be a little bit, like, not have it be quite so long, streamline it, focus that in? Is eliminating this going to impact that in any way?
I don't think so. I think limiting the, eliminating the public hearing that we typically have in January, we're not getting a ton of public input at that hearing, and we can gather that public input. The public can also send in input in writing in advance, absolutely, and they can also talk with their individual council members in advance of a workshop day. So I think we're not losing public input in this process. We're eliminating a hearing that, to me, is, you know, it's great, but it goes farther than we need to.
Yeah, it's really like based on our process now, is what I'm hearing. And without our process now, that hearing, that workshop is not necessary. Okay, well, that's a lot of time and effort for everyone, including the public, to keep up with so much material coming from us and opportunities for involvement. Then I had a question just about the council priority project is the new terminology. When I read that, I think it's a project, so there's an implication that there'll be implementation. Is this what the case study cities tend to use, since we're just studying that, we haven't made a decision on it? Is there any, because that was what we were trying to solve for, and I just want to hear the reasoning behind why that terminology is preferable?
Well, our thought on the terminology is that right now, by calling it a study issue, it can sound like you're just studying the topic, whatever it is. And that every, every one of these things that are on your list that are approved is actually a project. It has a beginning, it has an end, you're going to study feasibility as part of it, and it may be that you get to a midpoint and you find that it's not feasible, whatever it is. You're going to acquire a road from Caltrans. Maybe you get halfway through it or a third of the way, and Caltrans says, no, well, it's no longer feasible, but it's still a project. So we just think that would be clear terminology as to what it is that you're actually approving. But the council still, in the end, will decide whether to move forward in implementation of the item.
That makes sense. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you very much for helping me think that through fully. And so when, in this scenario where the boards and commissions propose one of these, would it be a council priority project, or would they be making a priority project proposal, and then that final say is then the council priority project?
Linda?
Yes, this is my last question. Okay, thank you.
We're on question number one. Okay, so now, Councilmember Ley.
Thank you so much. My questions were more or less the same as my colleagues. I want to reiterate, Councilmembers, Sisnaros' point that I want to keep this accessible to the public, but I also want to say that as someone who was, you know, pretty recently a member of the public, it's my observation that it's not necessarily about, oftentimes, the feedback that we hear from members of the public isn't necessarily about, you know, how many people think this is a good idea versus how many people can you, on your team, get out to a city council meeting? And that's a very different thing, and I'm not sure. And to some extent, that's, you know, that affects how we, as council members, like, we know that, but how important is it to preserve that process when it's already kind of lopsided? Secondarily, I want to say that I agree with Councilmember Shrinavasun and Councilmember Mellinger's point about the front-end work process and about how much time is being put into that. And I'm curious if the proposed changes are making the desired cut on that front-end time? Like, do we think this is enough to, is that, should we put that? Like, do we think this is enough to, is, should we put that work in after, only after it's approved? Or is there, are there more changes we can be making to the process to try to eliminate that wasted time?
So could more hours be cut?
Yeah, like, more time until it's approved or something.
So I think from, from our vantage point, from taking a look at, at how time is spent on the proposal process, you still will need at some point to have, and I'll let the city manager respond, staff do some level of analysis on the smaller subset of items that the council is potentially interested in funding. You know, not that all of them are going to get funded, but, but some level of analysis. So maybe the city manager wants to re-
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree with that assessment. There, there is value to having professional staff really stop and think and write the paper to make sure we've covered all the angles and we've got the scope right before we bring it to council. So I think that, that part, we're trying to minimize that, but that part is still an important part to the things that float to the top.
Good. And then just logistically, what would happen to the current existing list of study issues?
We, we would punt that answer to when we come back with the final, when we have a good final design, well, part of that will be, how do we implement this change? Because we have things that are in flight, we have things that are deferred. We have lots of community interest around those things. So we'll, we'll have to come back with that once we have a better definition about where we're going to land from your feedback today.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Klein?
Sure, I'll try to keep this short. I'm all for streamlining the process. Whatever we can do to save staff time makes a lot of sense. Look, talking about other cities, and you mentioned a little bit, the feasibility versus project. So what we have and how, how closely are they tied to priorities from other cities is one of the issues. Because it's like you have things that, that when I talk to residents, it's always, this is a study to conceivably evaluate eyes wide open whether or not we add, change operation, be more nimble, change direction in order to get feedback. At the end of that study, we make a change. And it varies on sometimes as a project, sometimes in evaluation of something. And I don't, from a city, from the different city standpoint, I'm happy to call them projects, but how much are often feasibility? And how much, how much of them are, what I'll say is, new capital projects or new specific plans?
Okay, that's such a great question. I would say that typically, the capital projects are embedded within the capital improvement plans of those cities and would not typically rise to, with some exception, you know, rise to a, a top priority. Now, an exception might be if there, if the city is going to be, you know, building a bridge, you know, something really huge. Then, then that might very well rise to, this is going to be a top council priority. But typically, items that are capital in nature would be embedded in those other cities.
Understood. Some cities have capital gateways, capital project gateways that, that, you know, new projects get prioritized and funded. We have kind of that from a full-budget standpoint of capital projects. But we don't have a, other than this process, we have no way of saying, we would like a scramble intersection at this intersection. We would like an Evelyn Trail. We'd have, so there is nothing part of our process to propose new capital projects, other than the study issue process. And so this is, this, this, as you're looking, as you're looking at, at feedback, you know, part of it is council wants our city to be more nimble. And I'm happy that current executive staff have that. You know, the two-year study strategic priority, already a goal from a city standpoint. That being said, to get the city to evaluate to be more nimble, sometimes the only way that works is for council to propose evaluating this or let's implement this project at this specific intersection or project within the city. So some are capital projects, some are, some are exactly the thing that you talked about, evaluating lights along El Camino Real. Now, one of the things I love about the Elk Grove standpoint is you have that half-yearly check-in. That project should, we should have pulled the plug a year early when Caltrans said, you take all the risk of all these lights along El Camino. And from a consultant standpoint, they just blindly went ahead and gave us, and gave council an update a year later saying, here's the final results, here's the risk, if you want to incur the risk. And of course, staff was like, we would never take the risk of taking over those lights. So, so I, I like some of the things of like the, the multi-year, multi, so mid-year kind of update, critical. Pulling the plug, and as you're talking about other cities, sorry, Vice Mayor, pulling the plug, to me, is very critical on getting that update. And from a staff standpoint, is it slipping? Or is there information that, that forces us to pull the plug? But from a study issue process or a project standpoint, there's adding capacity or a new direction from a nimbleness standpoint, and there's capital projects. And we, we put that under one umbrella here, which some cities do it a different way. And so I, I definitely like to hear, not tonight, but as far as, as part of the final report, is there something else that we should be adding for, from a capital improvement standpoint? And I'll be quiet for now.
Okay. Councilmember Cheng?
Yes, thank you for the presentation and all your work on this. And recognizing the impact on, on staff time and the commissions, I do think the year-round timeline can have a significant impact. And I think the current process can be frustrating for both staff and the public. In, in understanding the other city case studies, how does that dynamic work with the commissions? If, if the council is providing direction to the commissions, what's the feedback loop that you've seen?
Well, the typical process in other cities is that, that boards and commissions work on very discreet assignments or certain, you know, mission as prescribed in council resolution or the ordinance. And those cities that have a work plan that's approved by the city council, that's what those boards and commissions work on. And then they provide their recommendations back to the city council on those, on those items, that they provide policy advice. But it's, Sunnyvale is very unique in, in soliciting project ideas from boards and commissions. It's just unique.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more question. In the other case studies, is there an element involving neighborhood associations at all?
Well, not in any formal way. All those cities do have different kinds of, they have, you know, different kinds of neighborhoods, certainly, and many community groups, many, many interest groups. And they certainly provide their input through different means, whether it's through staff, city manager, departments, or through the city council. All of those cities are very engaged with the public.
Great, thank you.
Okay. And then my question relates to, I like how the other cities have alignment between their strategic plan and the adopted goals and the priority. So if we could do that, that would be great. And I think it would be great if we could share our strategic priorities with more in the community, the commissions, so that we'll all be on the same page. That's mainly my input. And so now we're going to question two, which question two, so everybody can start the cycle again, raising your hand. So question two is the board and commission. There were two options that were given as a baseline to balance input from the commissions and boards and simplifying the process. So we'll start with councilmember Melanger. And maybe we'll try to do two minutes each at max.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Chair. I'm going to be bad. And I'm going to say that I actually think that we should split the difference on these two options, although more towards option one than option two. And here's what I'd like to suggest. I do not like the idea of boards and commissions get to forward a study issue of their own to council, because what's the point if they can't find a council sponsor? So in that sense, more option one. But what I would suggest is that in December, the boards and commissions have a meeting to have a discussion of the study issues that are on the table. And then they can pitch an idea, forward one to council. And if that gets a council sponsor, it goes on the list. And if it doesn't, it doesn't. And so this is very much option one. I will say, having been chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission for some years, the study issue process for boards and commissions was a bear. It was a very heavy weight and it was, it took a lot of time. And I ultimately don't think it was terribly productive. I like the idea of them being able to give input. I like the idea of a structured way where they can say, we really think you should do this. But ultimately, you know, if you can't find even one council sponsor for the idea, it's not going to happen anyway. So option one with a little bit of a structured way for boards and commissions to give feedback. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sisneros?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I think I had my hand up from before. And, and so to clarify, because we're answering the question posed to council about the-
Board and commission. There were two options that were provided. One option was that we don't get any more input from them, just as individuals. And the other one was that they rank, a commission ranks one proposal and then that goes to be their submission.
Yeah, I'm familiar with those. I think I would just like to hear public comment before I answer that question.
We'll come back to you. So councilmember Cheng?
On the commissions, I, I think there is a pretty significant learning process in, for getting the commissioners to understand the study issue process. But I think there is some value in the deliberation in the commission meeting. I, I worry that if it's based on just the individual commissioners and they're going to the council members, it's actually less focused because it's all the different individual ideas coming, rather than, you know, we have these commissioners who are kind of experts in their fields or we, we've chosen and appointed them to these commissions and empowered them. And then they still decide to end up having these individual thoughts instead. So I think that there is some value to having them select one. But I also think maybe there should be an ability to have a backup one issue, just because I think ideas, things change in different years. And sometimes that's, that one issue might not be able to be pushed through. And I do think there should be some element of at least a one-year deferral because now that we've moved to two-year priority cycles. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Srinivasan?
Thank you. Overall, I prefer option one. I think boards and commission are, in my opinion, experts. And then their time is more valuable. On the other side, I will, I'll tell you about the role I am envisioning for our boards and commission. The way, and then we also have council representative on any board and commission, except two of them. They have access to two commission, two council members throughout the year. So they can easily pitch in, pitch their ideas to the council members. And then more importantly, for me, boards and commission, once a project is approved at whatever May meeting, that's when boards and commission can play a huge role because they are the experts. They can work with staff on a specific project which is applicable to the board, the commission as such. That's the role. And then they can also advise us on policy, all the other thing. I think that's the better utilization of boards and commission, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lei?
Thank you so much. I agree with both, with what councilmembers Melanger and Cheng said. I want to say that before councilmember Melanger's comment, I was leaning heavily towards option two, having, preserving that autonomy for, for boards and commissions to have their own idea without a council sponsor. I think I like that idea. As councilmember Cheng said, we, we spend a lot of time like choosing these folks. I feel like it's important that we take their, that we take their expertise into account. And if you can't find a council sponsor, then it's, doesn't seem to me that they have that much leg up on other members of the public who also have the ability to access council and to email us and get, and get our ear to sponsor something. So I do like preserving that. I, but I think that councilmember Melanger's suggestion where it's, is option one, but more structured, that makes a lot of sense to me too, so that the boards and commissions themselves can prioritize within their board and commission what they're going to be putting forward to us. So I'm not sure that was helpful. I, I agree with what my colleagues said. Thank you.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, definitely, our process has gotten harder and harder from a commission standpoint throughout the years as we've pushed back proposal times and ranking and everything else. I don't think ranking is that critical from a board and commission. I do think that bringing in front of them to hear their feedback, you know, and, and, and just as we get minutes from other, you know, from their standard commission meetings, getting feedback on proposed study issues that are, that are available in December and January before we come back to us in February makes sense. As other council members have said, getting, talking to their liaisons, talking to other council members to get a sponsor, you know, they can do individually like any member of the public. So I don't think it's critical to have the commission itself come with one idea. But conceivably, if any of those commissioners also had an idea for that December meeting, that January meeting on a good idea, that would be part of those minutes that would go on. It's like, oh, I would like to see this. That, that, it would then be incumbent upon council to, to either propose that when it comes in front of us or whatever that February meeting is. And, and I do think the deferred, and you mentioned in your presentation a little bit, keeping track of deferred issues, and I don't know how other cities are doing it, but a dashboard of things that have been previously put forward and deferred or dropped is, is a good compendium of ideas because conceivably, we, you know, the commissions, the residents, the council can say, oh, this was a good idea, or we did, we cited it wasn't good three years ago, but now it's really important. And so whether or not that's coming from a commission or a council member, it's having that data available on what's been dropped or what's been at least evaluated before. And, and that kind of looking backward is as important as making decisions for the current year.
Councilmember Sisneros?
Oh, I wanted to wait till after public comment, if that's okay?
Yeah, we still have question number three.
Okay, well, I will, I will just then say briefly-
This is just specific, what input do you want the commissions to give or not give?
Okay, well, yeah, I, I will note, I want to hear from the public on that, so I don't-
Okay.
But however, however, I will, if this is my opportunity to say something. With very few, with, if we have a process where council members have a very limited amount of projects we can then propose, there's going to be a lot of pressure on each individual council members to be sponsoring things, not just from commissioners, but members of the public generally. We have our own ideas that we come up with. We're working with, you know, potentially each other within brownout groups to see if we can get multiple ideas across with support. There, it's a lot more complicated than that. So I really appreciate the input from my two colleagues over here when you say, we do put a lot of time into appointing these commissioners. And, and this is a democratic body as well. And I think that they may very well and often do have ideas that council has not considered or may not have within our capacity to champion at that time. And I still want those ideas to have a big seat at the table. And also make that joining a commission would be a very worthwhile thing, that you really are a part of the policymaking process, and we do value that. So I want to have, I would really prefer the option where we have them, the, the commissions putting forth an idea to council at, at this time. I look forward to hearing from members of the public, and we'll have the next hearing on this, I'm sure. But thank you.
Okay. My thought is midway between option one and option two. So I like what councilmember Melanger was saying about the structure. Like, having a December meeting in which the commission, if they choose to, in their work plan, pull altogether their ideas, staff does not need to do a write-up on it, would be their simple, like, one or two paragraphs that they write, and they themselves rank them. And then it just stays there. And then the whole council would know what the commissions had. And then the council could decide to sponsor it. Just as if I am to propose, right now, I can propose study issues, but my colleagues might not even sponsor it. So commissions, maybe these ideas are very, anyway, those are my thoughts in between the two. commissions, maybe these ideas are very, anyway, those are my thoughts in between the two. So now we're going to go into question number three. So question number three, strategies for improvement, do you think would work well? And what concerns do you have? And then this can be, you know, like three minutes and then we'll go to the public after this. And then if we have time, we'll come back to the council. So this is sort of like, yeah. Okay. First, we have Mayor Klein.
Yeah. So one of the things that we're looking at capacity, one of the things that we don't really capture now is consultant time versus in-house. And we have more control in-house. Part of the issue is, as your studies pointed out, is our RFP process is a little bit broken when we talk about study issues and how long it takes to bring on board someone. So, you know, it's, it's often six months, nine months, a year after we've officially started some of these projects before we have a consultant online. So that needs to be captured from, from the proposal process. So that, that to me is important. Or whether or not it's an option from a city manager to list, this is how much it is in-house and we think we have capacity. This is how much it is from consultant. You know, we always assume we just get a figure. This is how much additional funding it is. But is that only consultant funding? Is that consultant plus staff time? We don't really have apples-to-apples comparison. So often when we're pushing things forward that were below the line to add additional funding, historically, it was always, it was always an issue to try to capture that portion of, of the bigger picture. And from capacity, definitely looking at, at trying to figure out how to best utilize capacity. The thing is, study issues aren't all equal. And this is the thing of, they hit different departments. We don't have as council any vision into what the real staff capability is. And we depend upon staff to deal with that. That being said, we're trying to either propose things to make staff more nimble, add capacity, add new ideas, as opposed to leaving things the way they are always done, which is kind of our standard service level. So it's a balance here and, and not to lose track of that vision, but that's what this ultimately is here for, trying to figure out how to change the organization, service levels, projects, all that. And that's the whole thing that I mentioned earlier about projects versus operations. And, and I think how we capture that becomes an important thing. And then concerns deferred or dropped, not losing those ideas. And you mentioned multiple times dashboards. We need a capacity for dashboards that we haven't been having within the, within the organization. And I'll keep my comments at that. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Councilmember Melinger.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Mayor. I'm going to echo everything the mayor said, put a me-too next to all of that. When I proposed this study issue a year and a half ago, a major part of the goal was to increase throughput and capacity for policy change in the city. I've said this before, policy change is a core function of government. We are elected to change policy. That is why we are on the dais. And so that is something that I think is very important. And I think that our process for policy change has gotten very badly encumbered as the workbook shows. And I think that what we've gotten is a very good start. And I look forward to October, the October meeting where we develop a new process, but that is the beginning and not the end. And there are further changes, in my opinion, that are needed. And one of the biggest things I want to call out, and this came through very clearly in the workbook, is the issue of consult, of lag time for hiring consultants. Because what you've basically laid out is, hey, we're going to spend the first six months of the year figuring out what we're going to do. And we're going to spend the second six months executing on it. But if we're spending the second six months hiring a consultant and waiting around for the RFP to get drafted and the RFP to finish and the consultant to get onboarded and everything else, then that schedule isn't real. And so coming back to some of the things I proposed in the initial draft study issue, we really need to be looking at how, A, when we're using consultants, B, how we can get them onboarded faster. I think something like a pre-approved set of consultants ready to work on whatever study issues are prioritized is a good idea. You know, there are a certain number of shops that do really well with transportation study issues, with community development study issues. We know there are going to be some transportation and community development projects in any given year. We don't know what they're going to be. But we can pre-budget some of this stuff and we can have pre-approved consultants. And I'll leave it to the city manager exactly how that could be implemented. But anything to cut that lag time on consultant RFPs down will, in my opinion, go a long way to getting things done faster. I think that the city needs to define service levels for policy change, for strategic council projects. Like, we are going to make a goal. You know, we're going to start with a goal of maybe eight per year and we're going to try to work up to 10. Because yes, I do think that we should have capacity to handle 10 variably sized projects in a year. You know, just, not all of these are going to be huge. That brings me to something else. The mayor's comments on capital projects is, those I think are really important. You know, with only three ideas per year, you know, there are, this also gets into something I've been concerned about is like, if we get three ideas per year, those are going to be big-ticket signature items. But there are still lots of small to medium things that need to get done. And so there's this gap. Some of the study issues that, and budget proposals I've had, you know, one was $100,000 a year for painting red curbs on sidewalks. That's not a big-ticket priority, but it's something that's worth getting done. You know, discussing whether we should close the trails on the levees and, in the bay. That's not a huge big-ticket item, but like, there's got to be a way to prioritize the smaller, medium things and get them done. And I don't necessarily think that having them duke it out with things like the Moffett Park specific plan or, you know, whatever else, you know, the Fair Oaks, you know, complete streets plan ideas is necessarily fair, right? Or a good idea. So making sure that there is a way for small to medium issues to get prioritized, making sure that, you know, I like the idea of maybe a capital project gatekeeper process. You know, some kind of way for council to, you know, review and get things onto the long-term capital improvement plan, right? I love the idea of a unified strategic plan. I do want to call that out. I think that's something that, as you say, we have the elements in place with the work plan. That is another key element that's getting there. Having a unified strategic plan with dashboards, we do need more capacity for dashboards in this organization. I think that's going to be critical. Whatever we come up with in October, and I look very, I very much look forward to seeing what we get back. There needs to be ongoing evaluation and improvement over the coming years. And targets, metrics, tracking, right? We need to be continually working to improve this process. What we come up with in October, it's going to be a beginning, not an end. And with that, I, I'm going to just say one more thing is that I do, as we go into this operational year coming forward, operational budget year, I do want us to be looking at what I've been calling the force multiplier hires. Data scientists, GIS specialists, community outreach specialists, people who can help these projects across a variety of departments and increase our capacity. And with that, I'll turn my microphone off. Thank you.
Councilmember Srinivasan?
Thank you. I have a lot of suggestions. First, I like, as you mentioned about other cities, alignment of projects with priorities. That's very, very critical. I would also like to see the cost of implementation. In this presentation, you talk about completion of a study issue or completion of the process, but not the implementation from what I could understand. But a lot of times what happens, as you know about the capital improvement projects, the, the implementation could be so much, we may not have budget or we may not have grants. So how do we, should we even start that as a project as such, right? The research? And then I would like to see for some of the projects, a proof of concept, do a simple thing. That way we, we can see it as an experimentation rather than a full-blown research. For example, traffic calming, we can do some study issue.
Keep going.
Yeah. And then I would also like to see the funnel. You mentioned about the hours we wasted on the front end. I would like to see how many study issues were processed, were proposed and then how many actually came through as above the line. I know we can find that, but that data should be interesting to see. And then also, how much time, how much money and time we used the consultants for these study issues and then which ultimately were not implemented. If you look at our dashboard, there are completed study issues which are not implemented yet. Some of them have been there since 2018. So, which means that we wasted so much time and money on these consultants. I also like dashboards. I am a big proponent of dashboard. It's not only for council, but it's for general public to know where things stand. And then our current dashboard, it just says completed or in progress. That's it. Nothing more. And then it has been like that for years together. So anything more detailed implementation is very, very good. And then I also understand about the RFP process to hire consultants. It's, as you mentioned, it's four to six months. But I would recommend to use our boards and commissioners and then past commissioners help to accelerate their process or clean up or do more research because they have the expertise which we don't use them at all. And then regarding the form simplification, I would add more, I would say we should add more details. That is, a lot of times what happens is since the study issue process are taking too much time, I think I talked to you one-on-one, the council dynamics changes. I call it council generations, right? Every two years, the council changes. And then every four years, the dynamics changes, right? The priorities might change. And then one class, one example is sport, outdoor sports, a study issue where we didn't have pickleball then and cricket then. Now suddenly this year, that's a big priority for this council. We specifically ask for that. And then similarly, events, special events and those kinds of things. So leveraging, I am a strong believer in leveraging boards and commissioners. They are experts. We can use them. And then, as I said, come, some of the just do it, I really like it. That is, and then that together with proof of concept is the right way to reduce the load. Ultimately, what we are trying to do, as you clearly pointed out, the case study cities, operations are very, very critical. Operations of the city. We have to maintain our street. We have to maintain our trees, parks and all those things. And then any additional projects are good to have and then should, we should do that. But it shouldn't come in the way of the operations of the city's staff's time and resources. So just do it and then, and then that would reduce the, and then using our, our boards and commission might be useful. And then the other thing I would also suggest is learning from similar projects. For example, this year, as I remember, there were four bicycle project, bicycle related projects. And then we, we should be learning from each other and then saying, okay, what did we do there? And then how did we do the street safe for everybody? That kind of it. Basically, learning from other sources. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember Lei?
Thank you so much. My concerns are similar to what Councilmember Melinger voiced, the, the impact of forcing council members to prioritize this limited number of projects. It will be those signature items. And the one that comes to mind is that update to the master plan that I think we did in spring. And it's something that had like fallen below the line for years and then another year and then another year. And then it was something that had to be done. And for me, finding the balance between the just do-its and these small to medium-sized projects, I think that's very important and something that we need to be more, more aware of as, between council and staff and just, and members of the public, like, if we only have the set number of projects, what happens to these other priorities that aren't as like encompassing as the Village Center Master Plan or Moffett Park Specific Plan or that, what, what was it? The, the North Sunnyvale Improvement Project thing that was below the line, but you know, is a big-ticket item. And then I would like to see and talk about more, and I guess this is part of those study issues process itself, but I think when we do, if we make this change, it forces us to do the calculus of how impactful will this be without staff having, having input on that, right? Like, that's something that we have to try to figure out ourselves. And maybe it's, maybe it's obvious, but maybe it's not. And I think having staff input on that before that, before we're, as individuals have to do that is, is an, is important step of the process. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. The names on Zoom aren't working correctly, but is it that Councilmember Sisneros has her hand raised or not?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's odd. Mine's not showing up either. Anyway, I will just very quickly go through as I echo many of what my colleagues have said, very good thoughts. The issue of consultant versus in-house, I want to echo the mayor on that. And the dashboard capacity, I think having historical information is going to, accessible to both the public and the council is going to be really helpful as we take a long-term look at our, at our policy trajectory and what we're introducing. What I think is going to work really well is the strategic priority setting and alignment process. That's going to really draw things together. As was mentioned, we have all the pieces there and that's something that will really tie together a cohesive strategy as a city and help us all understand the kind of direction we're going in as well. I'm going to be very interested to understand what the impact of these changes are on the actual throughput over time. So one of the things that I have concerns about is being able to have check-in points in the future, and I'm talking years out, but over time to step back and say, hey, we made these changes. How is it going?
Right.
And I don't say that to add more process. I'm saying that just for intentionality. When we're making systems change so that we're able to look at the different levers we're pulling and not just kind of putting together another process that might get overwhelming in the future as well. Just being intentional about it, I think is going to help us keep away from these larger, like another study issue of study issues in 15 years. Capturing the process for small and medium issues so that it's easy to understand both for the public and council. I think my colleagues made some really good points is in understanding what's, what's a just do-it item. That's really helpful, but that's also what we appoint the city manager to understand is what can be done now versus what needs to be a study. Going to rely on, on his guidance on that, but it's also going to help us if we're introducing a limited number of studies to, to make that consideration. So that's going to be, have to be very clear in a way that can help inform decision-making. And then yes, I think that is all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any other council members' hands raised. So then I'll, I, I know, I wanted to speak and then I'll let city managers speak. So I only have, I agree with a lot of what my colleagues have said, all really good input. I like the comment about apply agreed-upon set criteria for adding projects mid-year. Such as it's emergency, we just got the money for it. It's a time-sensitive thing. But back to stay focused, stay disciplined. I like that. And also, I like that we're shaving time, staff time off the front end. So then at the back end, staff can use their time to have, identify key tasks and phases that would be value-added for tracking. I think we've heard like dashboards, so really quality dashboards or quality check-in time or, you know, quality outreach. So those are my inputs. So I don't see any other council members raising their hands. So now I'll go to City Manager, Tim Kirby.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just-
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just very briefly, just a couple quick comments. I've heard a lot of comments about dashboards and staff capacity. Just want to remind council that over the past two fiscal years, we've added more than 40 FTE and that those are still spinning up. So there is a lot of capacity that has been added for things, including like a GIS team. So we are working on some of those things already, already. And then just in terms of projects to give you some context, there are hundreds of projects in the budget. I just gave a quick count of just the traffic and transportation section in the, in the budget book. And there are over 60 projects in flight right now. So I just want to make sure that when we're talking about this, like this is, this is only, again, part of the picture and part of the priority setting process. So always like to remind council that we are making progress and these comments are super helpful. So thank you very much. And I don't want to take any more time away from the public. Thanks.
Okay, now I will go ahead and open public comment on the specific item. Please submit your speaker card to the city clerk or use the raise hand feature. Dial star nine on the telephone indicate you wish to speak. So I will call on members of the public participating in person first, followed by remote speakers. And the speakers will have 90 seconds. So my first speaker is D. David K.
Hi, it's so great to have you guys here. I appreciate being able to talk about this for a second. I'd just like to say that since my, I'm the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm speaking in that capacity right now. I wrote something like 12 study issues over the course of the last five years. And I am so proud of having, having had the opportunity to do that. And I know that during that process of those things that have actually made it above the line, there was one of them, right? And that is okay. I'm super proud of that particular item. But I know that the impact goes well beyond that. The fact of the matter is that one of them died in this horrible fashion. And the fire that came out of that, though, turned into a different study issue by another person, which then got picked up. Another study issue that I, that I had that went out there got killed at the commission level, but it resurfaced and has allowed you guys to talk about slowing traffic down along parks by using AB2, AB43. Another one of them which died resurfaced and we talk about it at our commission because City Line actually owes the city the opportunity to do at least two more functions. And one of them was the idea of ice skating around, around downtown. And that study issue got us that, that opportunity. So when you talk about, you know, when you talk about the value of deliberation, I agree. It happens at the commission level. When you talk about, when you talk about the development process, I agree and it happens at the commission level. When you talk about, you know, what leverage do we have to pull for, for capital improvement projects? I'm telling you, the, what we have at the commission level is this particular item. And I don't envy you for having the decision this being put in front of you right now about killing it. And I urge you not to. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else want to speak on this re- item in the room before I move to remote speakers? So I don't see, oh, yeah, I don't see any more cards.
Oh, wishing to speak.
Okay, so you have 90 seconds.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Anderson. I am the president of the Sunnyvale Historical Society and I'm just here to thank you for what you do. And just let you know some activities that are coming up. And on September.
We'll actually be getting, so this is still on the study session. So we'll get to communications in just a moment.
We have a little behind schedule.
My god.
We'll be there in a few minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
You can sit down now. Okay, so I don't see any other speakers in the room. So now we can move to remote speakers. Remote speakers are warned to limit their comments to agenda item being considered. Speakers who are ruled out of order will not be given another chance to speak on this item. The title of this item is to evaluate city of Sunnyvale study issue process. Clerk, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, Vice Mayor. First is Martin P., followed by Doug K. Martin, you have 90 seconds to address city council.
Hi, Martin Pine, Planning Commissioner, speaking solely on my own behalf. I just wanted to say that one thing I didn't see mentioned in any of the documentation that I think could be used to leverage as a feedback tool is the annual board and commission is annually boards and commissions are given the opportunity to provide input and a formal recommendation as to the budget. I don't think we, I honestly don't think we leverage this effective, as effectively as we could right now frequent, and I recognize, I recognize our scheduling issues with this, but frequently we do have those hearings between this workshop and the public hearing, which is, I think, less effective than between when the, when the budget is published and draft budget is published and the, the budget workshop. But I also recognize that boards and commissions are not necessarily scheduled to meet in that period of time. That being said, especially, I do think we could be leveraging that more effectively. And when this comes back as a final report, I think it might be useful to have at least some discussion of what, of how that would integrate into this entire, all the process changes of changing the ways boards and commissions give feedback into the study issue process and into the more general systemic process of what the city is prioritizing. Thank you.
Next up is Doug K., followed by Courtney J. Doug K., you've been unmuted and have 90 seconds to address city council.
Evening, council members. This is Doug Coombs, Sustainability Commissioner, speaking on my own behalf tonight. I really appreciate this, the study issue itself and, and the, you know, spirit of accelerating our, our delivery of study issues. I particularly like the points of, you know, having a strategic plan and making sure the study issues are tied to it and eliminating deferrals of study issues. I, I know that as the Sustainability Commission has considered, you know, study issues every year, that deferrals, you know, things that have come back from previous years often are, are much more likely to be a waste of time. And I also like that this urges commissions to think realistically about, you know, what's likely to happen in terms of capacity down the road. And, and so, you know, focuses minds in terms of, to live within their means. In terms of the role of the boards and commissions, personally, I favor option two and I want to talk a bit about why. As, as you're developing a study issue, you know, the, the, who you are able to workshop that idea with is very important. And serving on a brown act, you know, brown acted body, you know, I can only workshop ideas with other sustainability commissioners in the, the commission meetings. And if I'm wanting to, you know, have a sounding board of people with good sustainability knowledge and good city policy history and knowledge, the Sustainability Commission's really great place to do that. And I want to have the opportunity to, to work with my fellow commissioners, like before I approach a city council member so that we've really got something that's fine tuned. And also the ability for the commission to speak as a commission rather than individuals, you know, has led to commission, study issues coming out of our commission like climate budgeting, artificial turf, and even going way back to creation of Silicon Valley Clean Energy. So I really do think that there is a, an important place for the commissions in a streamlined study issue process. Thank you.
Next up is Courtney J., followed by Stephen M. Courtney, you have 90 seconds to address the city council.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Courtney Johnson. I am also on the Sustainability Commission, but speaking tonight on my own behalf. There was a great conversation and a great presentation. Thank you so much. I agreed with the vast majority of the points that were made and I won't repeat those. I did want to make three comments. One, I don't have to make anymore because it was just made that I do think there's value in allowing the boards and commissions as an entity to provide or to propose a study issue every year. The second one is that it was commented that 70% tasks on the proposals are not approved and that that time is wasted by city staff. And I would like to clarify that it is not all wasted by city staff. Even earlier this month in the Sustainability Commission, an idea was presented on energy usage of AI data center. It did prove by the commission, but we had a wonderful conversation and very thought-provoking conversation that would not have happened without that. So even though not everything gets approved, I do thank that staff for their time and I think it's valuable. And then my third point is more of a question. I have a study issue proposal idea that I've like half drafted and it would be helpful if commissions and the public could get guidance from the clerk on if there is either a deadline of ideas must be submitted by a certain date or we should pause or what, so that people are not putting in a whole bunch of time only to find out that they won't be considered in spring of next year. So thank you very much for your time and all the work that has been done on this. Good night.
Next is Stephen M. Stephen, you've been unmuted and 90 seconds to address the city council.
Hello. Good evening, council. Thank you for working on this topic. It's quite important. First, I'd like to recognize your new city manager, Tim Kirby, is making things so effective because he's taking a lot of things that used to be stopped and he's just acting operational. And that just is so incredibly efficient and I really appreciate that. My second point is that at all times, there should be council direction. And what I find is that things go open loop for extended period of time with lots of consultant expenses and studies before council even gets to engage. So like in reference, I noticed on Holonback that there's a lot of council input that seemed to come late in the process as opposed to earlier. And then we have ongoing problems with staff alignment. I would call it more like staff filibustering where members of staff are not supporting council direction. Specifically, I'd like to refer to DPS as blocking improvements to traffic calming. And DPS is being very uncooperative on the traffic improvements for Tasman Drive. I think every study issue should require a public hearing at least every six months so that council can have an opportunity to give direction. Please take power back from staff and into your hands. You are council, you give direction, you give excellent direction, you're a great council. I would like to see you empower yourselves. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, that was the final remote public speaker.
Okay, I will close the public comment. And do we have any council members that want to make comment? Councilmember Mellinger?
Thank you very much. I will be very brief. First of all, I think Commissioner Pine's comments are well taken. Second of all, I think that is definitely good to message to the board and commissioners. You know, have some messaging to board and commissioners. This is, the study issue process is still the adopted process of the city. And so, you know, we are going to obviously need to have some sort of transition ideas in mind in October, but this is still the process of the city. And with that, I will turn my microphone off. Thank you.
Okay, do I have any other council members? Okay, Mayor Klein?
Just, just a quick comment. So one of the things that you listed was a strategic plan. I, I just want to raise very quickly the concept of updating a strategic plan the same time when we're updating strategic priorities on a yearly basis or bi, bi-annual basis. I'm not sure how that document fits into the grander scheme. You know, and when the budget comes back to us, we kind of have our strategic priorities. But to create a whole new document, I think creates additional work for staff. A light document, fine, you know, how a strategic plan. But, but as the city manager was saying, having a wide variety of staff, you know, service level deliverables as well as here's our strategic priorities. Just wanted to raise that, that, that it conceivably is a nice document to have. That being said, updated every two years or every year, depending upon if we're tying it to the projects is part of my question. So I'll leave it at that and thank you for, for diving into this and hearing our comments tonight.
Okay, I don't see any other council members raising their hands. So I'll just make some brief comments. I, I like what I heard about commissions still being involved, but being very streamlined and being very judicious with the use of staff time, meaning maybe no big write-ups, but giving it, getting input from the commissions in some way and allowing them to talk as a board might be good, just one meeting. And they might rank something. That's just my opinion. I like Commissioner Pine talk about the integrating it with the budget process. And it seemed like a lot of people today, what I heard was dropping deferrals is good and living within their means. And I just think that this was great input from the community, from our consultants, from the staff and our council. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 7:13 and we'll meet again at.
So we'll take a seven-minute recess and come back at 7:20. So we'll take a seven-minute recess and come back at 7:20. Good evening. Let's call it over the council meeting of August 26, 2025 at 7:21 PM. The city does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Sunnyvale prides itself on the rich diversity of our residents. We are committed to creating a culture of belonging where members of our diverse community feel included, safe and respected. This council meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means that council can regulate the time, place and manner of speech. Speaker comments must be limited to the agenda item being considered by council for consent calendar or public hearing items. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to the matters within council's authority, generally referred to as council's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are not related to an agenda item, the presiding officer will rule that speaker out of order. A speaker will not be ruled out of order with, because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Location and online meeting details are available on the council agenda. Scan the QR code on the screen or click the language access and translation link on the council agenda to read and listen along in more than 60 different languages. Use the show captions button to view captions on Zoom. Comments on matters not on the agenda must be submitted prior to the time I call the item for oral communications. Comments on agenda items must be submitted prior to the time I close a public hearing on that agenda item. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to the time period set for the specific item and time limits will be strictly enforced. Guidelines are posted on the city website and on the council meeting agenda. First, please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is roll call. City clerk, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Klein?
Present.
Vice Mayor Sal?
Present.
Councilmember Sisneros?
Present.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Present.
Councilmember Shuni Lawson?
Present.
Councilmember Chang?
Present.
Councilmember Lay?
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you very much. Next, we have several special orders today, so let me come up to the lectern. Good evening. Before we begin tonight's meeting, we have a special guest present in honor of Silicon Valley Pride. Joining us tonight is Nicole Denson, the chief executive officer of Silicon Valley Pride. Please come forward. And I also invite our own council member Mellinger to come down and join me at the lectern. This year marks the 56th anniversary of the Stonewall riots. In 1969, the Stonewall Inn in New York's Greenwich Village, the LGBTQ plus community came together to take a stand against public harassment and discrimination, spurring the LGBTQ plus rights movement. Locally, Silicon Valley Pride has been a long, has had a long and rich history here in the Bay Area, having been founded as a gay rights rally in 1975 in San Jose and before evolving throughout the years to become an inclusive, diverse and welcoming, welcoming collaboration of the South, in the South Bay, known as Silicon Valley Pride. Nicole, would you like to say a few words?
I would always like to say a few words. My name's Nicole Denson. I am a proud brown Mexican Native American lesbian woman. I introduce myself like that for a very specific reason and it is because I want to highlight the intersectionality that makes up myself and the rest of the beautiful LGBTQ plus community. This year marks Silicon Valley Pride's 50th anniversary. 50 years of pride, 50 years of love and liberation and legacy, 50 years of being unstoppable. When the board of directors decided what this year's theme should be, it took us a minute and then we decided to make our theme unstoppable. This theme, it represents more than just a parade day. Glitter and sparkles from all of the fabulous community that we host on our festival. But it, it reminds us of how powerful the LGBTQ plus community is. We are unstoppable. We have lived our lives fighting for people and for our community to have the same rights as everyone else. We fight for the right to be seen, to be heard, to be recognized and to be validated. We will not be erased. And even though we are seeing legislation sweep across this country that is targeting not only the queer community, but targeting, targeting other marginalized groups so drastically that people are being left in detention camps, being raided by ICE and taken away from their homes. Women's bodies are being legislated and trans individuals are trying to be erased by our government. So that is why this year Silicon Valley Pride is celebrating 50 years of being unstoppable. We were unstoppable then, we are unstoppable now, and we will continue to be unstoppable. Please come and join us for Silicon Valley Pride's 50th anniversary celebration that is to happen at Plaza de Caesar Chavez on August 30th, this Saturday, and August 31st for our parade and festival. We look forward to seeing you there. Happy Pride, everyone.
Stand here, we'll finish. Thank you. So Silicon Valley Pride embraces and recognizes the unity of our area and works to inspire the community to come together and be unstoppable. Their mission is to create safer spaces and advocate for the LGBTQ community to thrive and through organizing and sponsoring year-round events and programming. This includes the annual Silicon Valley Pride Parade this August, happening, of course, this Sunday and events all weekend long and all year long. We are also honoring Bisexual Plus Awareness Week, known as BIWeek. Bisexual Plus Awareness Week seeks to increase cultural awareness and acceptance of the bi-plus, bisexual, pansexual, fluid, no-label and queer community. The bi-plus community represents more than half of the LGBTQ plus community and represents, and makes them, that makes them the largest single group. BIWeek highlights their struggles and their triumphs because even as we have great strides have been made with the LGBTQ plus acceptance, there are still deep prejudices against people who are bisexual, pansexual, fluid or generally attracted to more than one gender. I invite our council member Mellinger to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It is an honor to be here out as the first openly elected queer man on city council. I want to also acknowledge Councilmember Sisneros was our first openly elected queer council member. And thank you so much for your service. Hi. My name is Richard and I'm an out and proud bi man. And because I am a bisexual disaster, I did not prepare comments for this. I'm just speaking off the cuff. When I was growing up in the 90s, there was not really a model for what I felt. You could be gay and you didn't want to be gay because this was the 90s. Or you could be straight. And I was like, well, I'm attracted to women, therefore I must be straight. And this gets to something, which is even today, even with Tumblr and TikTok and Twitter and Instagram and social media and all of these things that have actually done a great deal to spread awareness. You know, the bisexual identity is still often erased and visible. It's kind of left, it's kind of the everybody else category sometimes within the queer community. And what that means is that people who grow up feeling like I did often, it takes us a long time to find our people. It takes us a long time to figure out who we are. And that's why Bisexual Awareness Week is so important because some of the consequences of that invisibility. I've seen studies, you consistently see higher rates of physical and mental health issues, domestic violence, sexual assault, suicide attempts within the bisexual community. That our community is directly harmed by that lack of visibility. And so that's why Bisexual Awareness Week is so important. It's important for everyone growing up to understand, to, to be able to see that, to be able to see other people like them, to be able to realize, oh, wait a minute. Those are the words for how I feel. And you know, it's also important to recognize that bisexual people were always a part of Pride, always a part of the movement. You know, Brenda Howard, an out and proud bi woman who sadly passed away some years ago, is called the mother of Pride for the work that she did. So this upcoming Bisexual Awareness Week, this coming September, I think it's a great opportunity for all of us to reflect on the world we want to, to build, where people are free to love who they love, where they're able to find representation of who they are, where they don't have to fit neatly into one of two boxes, where there's room for that messy middle. And there's room for people like me and like so many others out there. The people who can't sit in chairs properly, the people who can't make up their minds, the people who love the finger guns. That there's room for us here too. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. To affirm our statement of values, the city of Sunnyvale is committed to respecting, valuing and affirming all members of our community, regardless of their gender, their sexual orientation or their gender identity. Today and every day, we celebrate our LGBTQ plus community, which includes many residents, business owners, city employees and students. It is my great pleasure to proclaim August 2025 as Silicon Valley Pride Month and September 16th through the 23rd, 2025 as Bisexual Awareness Week in the city of Sunnyvale. I encourage you all to be proud and love who you love. Thank you. And thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next up, we'll have the ceremonial oath of office for several of our board and commission members.
Pull up and join me. Sir, you both here? So if you can please raise your right hand. If you can, there we go. And after I state the oath, respond with I do. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties as a board and commission member to the best of your abilities?
I do.
Congratulations on your appointment to your various commissions. Thank you.
Congratulations. And for our final recognition of the night, I would like to take a moment to share with you one of our city's most valuable resources, the Sunnyvale Public Library. And joining us tonight, Garrett Kuramoto, Superintendent of Libraries, please come forward. In a time when very few things cost nothing, public libraries continue to be the people's university, a place where education, self-help, discovery and exploration are all free. A library card can provide access to a stream of movies, learn a new craft, practice a new language, even check out a stargazing kit just by getting your library card. With a library card, students and entrepreneurs alike can take advantage of online education and earn their high school diplomas, learn how to code or grow their revenue. Adventurers explorers can even experience new cuisine from a cookbook or find an escape in a new fiction series. Getting your free public library card is a priceless investment in you. As a former librarian and library advocate, the first lady Laura Bush once stated, "The most valuable thing in my wallet is a library card." Garrett, would you like to say a few words about our library?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The theme of this year's National Library Card Sign-up Month in September is One Card and Less Possibilities. And it reminds me of the possibilities that were unlocked. So as a child growing up here in Sunnyvale, the time when I got my first library card was really a life-changing moment for me. At that time, it unlocked a whole world of books, stories, music, and at that time, it was pretty, pretty new and novel, but computers. In fact, at the time when I was growing up here in Sunnyvale, this library, I remember when the very first library catalog search computer was installed. And learning that skill of how to search on a computer for books in the library, I mean, if only my parents knew how important that skill learned then would be to my future career now. And so, you know, I, I really think fondly about that. I could wish that every child here in Sunnyvale would, like me, consider and have a wonderful career in libraries, but I know that's not realistic. But I do know that it is possible that every child in our city could have a library card and use that card to unlock a world of possibilities for them, just like it did for me. My challenge to all of us is that we would look for a child or an adult in our life, in our sphere of influence and challenge and ask, do you have a library card? And if you don't, encourage them to come out to the Sunnyvale Library in the month of September to get their free library card and join our world of possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. And so on behalf of the Sunnyvale City Council, I hereby, hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as National Library Card Sign-up Month in the city of Sunnyvale. I personally encourage... I personally encourage everyone to get a library card and discover or rediscover the wonderful options that our library provides, as well as meet some great library staff. So, thank you very much. Thank you for all the two and the entire library staff, too. Thank you. This is now the public's opportunity to address council on topics not listed on tonight's agenda. This section is limited to 15 minutes and may be extended or continued after our public business. Individuals may only speak once during oral communications. This council meeting is considered a limited public forum, which means the council can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech. Speaker comments during oral communications must be limited to matters within council's authority, generally referred to as council's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker's comments are outside of council's subject matter jurisdiction, the presiding officer will rule that speaker out of order. This allows council to conduct its business in a reasonably efficient manner and protects the rights of other speakers. A speaker will not be ruled out of order because of a disagreement with the content of their speech. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk, raise your digital hand now, or dial *9 on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Before I get to the public, Councilmember Mellinger has several announcements.
I do, don't I?
Yes, you do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First up, Sunnyvale goes back to school. After a few weeks of summer break fun, Sunnyvale students are heading back to school since the last few weeks students all over the city and South Bay have been walking and biking to school. Some students are driving to school for the first time. To ensure a safe return and commute for everyone, here are a few pointers. Obey the 15 mile per hour speed limits around schools. Our public safety officers will be out as a reminder. Drive carefully and observe all traffic laws. Be on alert for pedestrians, cyclists, and student drivers. Please obey all crosswalk guards. Do not use disabled parking stalls as a drop-off. Be patient while driving, especially in school zones. We wish everyone a safe and happy return to the school year. Public announcement, announcement number two, Sunnyvale State of the City. Celebrate Sunnyvale with us. We invite you to our annual State of the City event on Saturday, September 20th. This event is free and open to all members of the public and will be from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at City Hall. It will include opening reception, mayor's State of the City address, board and commission recognition, community awards, and a resource fair. For more information, visit sunnyvale.ca.gov and search "State of the City." We hope you can join us in recognizing all of the wonderful people and happenings in the city of Sunnyvale.
Thank you, council member. I will now be reading off speaker names. I'll read off two names. The first person, please come to the lectern. The second person be hopefully be waiting close by to, to speed the transition between speakers. First up is Rania, followed by Hani.
Okay, yeah, we can just skip the video. Good evening, council members. I'm Rania Zhang, and I'm a senior at Homestead High School, and these are my friends Kabir, Hani, and Vincent. And today we'll be sharing a project that we've been working on with the support of Councilmember Shuni Vasan, and it's called the Sunnyvale AI Meeting Minutes Project. So we'll be going over first the introduction, and we'll, due to time constraint, we'll be skipping the demo for now, but you guys do have a copy of the slides. And then we will be talking about the input AI models used, our next steps, and we'll be mentioning our team. So first, we truly, truly appreciate everything that you do. We believe what you talk about is very important. For example, the 50th year anniversary of the LGBTQ+ community here, we believe everyone should know about that. So our main goal is to increase public visibility. And how we do that, today's meeting is probably going to be around three hours, but these meetings can extend maybe all the way up to seven hours. So our goal is to take the captions that are posted publicly on the Sunnyvale City Council website, and we created a program that, that calls an AI model, and then it automatically produces for us around three to maybe six or seven-page-long PDF summaries that the public can be able to view, and they'll be able to understand what, everything that happened in a city council meeting. So this is the demo that we can skip.
Hello, my name is Hani. I will be talking a little bit more about the inputs that our program does require. One of these inputs that, two of these inputs that our program does require comes through accessing the Legista website that the Sunnyvale City Council refers to. And this, and these are the agendas and the transcripts. We feed their links of respective meeting minutes, sorry, of respective meetings onto our program, and the program will access them through requests. In total, we have three different input methods. We require the agenda. This is to make sure that the generation of our summary is within the focuses of the council and to keep things concise. We have a sample. This is a human-written meeting minutes that is also from the Legista website that we take and use as a format template. And we also have a transcript, which is all of the direct captions that occur in the meetings, and we use all of that to help generate our summary.
Thank you. And before, Hani, before you pass it on to, to the next speaker, okay, at the end. Go ahead, Kabir.
So, my name is Vincent, and I'll be talking about more about our AI usage and testing. So as Rania stated before, we've been experimenting with lots of different AI models, and here's a list of some of the AI models that we've tested out. And from our experiment team, we've decided to use Google Gemini as our AI model of choice to perform the, to perform the program. And this is because it actually creates the highest-quality summaries, and it is also free for us to use. Currently, we're using the free version, and it takes about three minutes to generate one meeting minutes for a three to almost seven-hour-long meeting. So I think that's very good.
Hello, my name is Kabir. So after addressing this, what are our next steps? So we are hoping to increase visibility. So as we've created these meeting minutes documents for the City of Sunnyvale government, we hope to release this to the public. Although we cannot post it on the Legista website or the City of Sunnyvale Meeting Minutes websites right now, we do invite you council members to link the CP mentorship website to your own networks or any other city channels that might work. So we're also hoping to focus on other applications. Right now, we have only developed AI meeting minutes producing for the city council meetings. However, there are also many meeting boards or meeting bodies, such as a sustainability commission, planning commission, and so on. So we are hoping to expand our scope as we keep going further and continue to improve our model. And then part of increasing scope is also reaching beyond City of Sunnyvale government. We have presented to the Mopita, San Mateo, and one other, and now Sunnyvale City Government. So we are hoping to stay in contact with them and maximize the transparent, public transparency that we are trying to create. And we want to thank our team, our mentors. First off, we would like to thank Councilmember Shuni Vasan for helping guide us through and create the best product for this impactful project. Catherine Liu and Dr. Xiaojing Dong for keeping us in check and then making sure we meet our deadlines and creating the best product as well. And then Karbada Mbalasubramanian for helping us with the technical, technical aspects of this project. So and this wouldn't be possible without our great team members, Rania, Vincent, Hani, Clara, Liu, and I. So thanks, many thanks to them. And here's our contact information. You can access the website and the meeting minutes on the CP mentorship website, which is just www.cpmentorship.org. And if you want to email, you can contact katliu@cpmentorship.org. Thank you all so much.
Stay here for just a moment. You have several questions from council. First up is Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all for an excellent presentation. Have you made your source code or your models publicly available?
Yes, so our PDFs generated are on the CP mentorship website. So if you go to projects, and then you will be able to find the Sunnyvale Meeting Minutes, and then they're freely downloadable.
Okay, excellent. So I do have a couple of questions. One is, you know, there's a well-known problem with AI hallucination. And so, you know, essentially, anything you run through an AI, you often have to have a human being check it. How do you make sure that the minutes you're producing are accurate?
So we feed the AI the transcript. So the transcript has all of, the transcript is very long, and it has all of the details. And so the main, the only source of hallucination it could hallucinate is the agenda items because we tell it to first look for agenda items and then organize the notes based on the agenda items. But we specifically tell the, we specifically prompt it to, if it doesn't find any agenda items, or if there's not enough, then just to summarize based on the main points they find.
Okay. So along those lines, one thing to look out for is our transcripts are, I believe, auto-generated, auto-captured. So I've often gone through those transcripts trying to find a particular thing, and there are a lot of misspellings and misidentifications in those transcripts. So that would be something to watch out for as you use this. The other question I have is, does your product have a way of identifying motions and actions taken?
So for the first thing you mentioned that, wait, sorry, what was the first thing you mentioned?
Transcript inaccuracies.
Right. Transcript and, so the AI models are smart, and if you misspell something, they put it in the context of what was happening. So that misspelling is not a very big issue. And additionally, for the council member names, if you look on our slides, originally, the council member names were misspelled, and we just hardcoded it to spell your names correctly.
Well, that's one way of doing it.
Yeah.
And then the last question I had was, does it have some way of picking out like action items, motions, amendments, things like?
Right. So since we do only look at the transcript, that, that is not considered, but we could consider, because we do know the videos are also open to the public, we could also consider adding that because this is also still a work in progress.
This is incredibly, this is very impressive work. My day job is as a software engineer. I use AI as part of my job routinely. Very impressed with all that you've done. And yeah, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Vice Mayor Sel.
Thank you for working on this. Thank you for presenting to us. So in working on this project, has it made you more interested in city government? Or what have you learned most from this?
Yes, for sure. So for me, to be honest, before this, I was, I didn't even know that you could come to a city council meeting, and I didn't know a lot of this stuff was really public. So I think for me, throughout this project, I've learned so much about all the free resources that you guys have, and I, for me, I think it's really important to get more people to know that all of this information is available to them, if any of you guys want.
Yeah, similar to Rania, I think I also learned, I didn't, wasn't too familiar with public relations to local governments. So especially as I spoke to the San Mateo City Council, I learned how much people care about these issues as well in presenting to the city council. And then also, we learned how important, you know, public transparency is with the local governments to the people. So yeah, I think we, I know I did, learn a lot about how much the public does care about local governments and their actions, and has, I guess, influenced me in what I would want to do and how I can affect the community as well.
Okay. And then one last thing, many of us are engineers on this council, and we're on this council, and by profession, we're engineers. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. Next up is Councilmember Shuni Vasan.
Mayor, can I go last, after all the other council members?
Sure. Next up is Councilmember Lei.
Hello, I would like to request that you hardcode my, spelling my name to LE, just one E. It's showing up as LAY right now.
Oh, yeah. So that's in the video. If you, so the most recent one is the August 12th on the slide, so that's the after the hard code.
Fantastic. Okay. I do want to echo what my colleagues have been saying. Thank you for this work. It's fantastic that you're doing it, and I really appreciate the engagement from young members of our community. I think this is a very, it's a great thing. It will make these minutes a lot more accessible to the public, and I would be, I'm just really impressed that you were able to put this together and very thankful that you put your time into doing this. I do want to ask if you guys do have a human touch, someone like reviewing these things and making sure for accuracy, at least the first few times, because when you get down to it, are, are, the transcripts are auto-generated by AI sort of, and then you're going to feed that into another AI, and it's just, I just want to make sure there's a human touch in there so it just don't get computers talking to more computers and then outputting them for humans without, you know, it's a little bit matrix-y.
Yes, that's a good concern, but as Rania mentioned, we are hardcoding as of now, and right now, we don't have the process automated when we upload it, these files to the CP mentorship website. So right now, we are, each of us manually reading and ensuring that all the information is correct and accurate. So as we move forward and hoping to automate this process, we will still try to keep this human touch involved. So as of now, we are still reviewing what's being generated.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shuni Vasan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks. It's such a pleasure working with this group. We used to meet almost weekly, and then their enthusiasm was infectious, and then I was, I really thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed working with them. Initially, we started trying to come up with a project using AI, and then this was one of the projects we decided on. I want to call out Professor Dong there, and then she is a mentor. She teaches data science and marketing in Santa Clara University. Her input is valuable. We are working on different projects, and then this project was really, really impressive, the way they looked at different AI models. And then, by the way, Councilmember Lei, I pointed out your name incorrect. Subsequently, it's corrected, I think. But anyway, it's very, very impressive. I am truly honored to be part of your team. Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation. And then if you can make the presentation available to council, right, Mayor?
Yes.
Council@sunnyvale.ca.
Or send it to the city clerk, and we'll pass, we'll pass it on.
So that would be awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you for, for kind of leading the way on conceivably what the city can be doing, and so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is John B., followed by Charlene L.
Could I have the presentation? Do we, yeah, there it is. Okay, thank you. My name's Jonathan Blum. I'm speaking on behalf of Sunnyvale Safe Streets about the potential impact of parking removal as part of the Hollenback Bike removal as part of the Hollenbeck Bike Lanes project on the parking on Hollenbeck. Excellent. So the brief summary is, first of all, the unoccupied side street parking is in great excess over the number of cars currently parked on Hollenbeck. So for the 30, 39 cars currently parked at night on Hollenbeck, there are about 352 open parking spaces available within 500 feet on the side streets. The unoccupied side street parking is available in, in all, for all but three of those 39 cars is available on the same block and on the same side of the street of Hollenbeck, meaning that people don't have to go more than a block nor across the street, across Hollenbeck to get to it. The above is true at all times of day and at all days of the week that were surveyed. And the daily number of cyclists using Hollenbeck, even without bike lanes, is still considerably greater than the number of parked cars. I want to emphasize that the source of this information is the staff parking counts, which were kindly provided to us by the staff. So there's no issues of data integrity or biased collection because it came from them. So I want to quickly look at the, the south side of the area of Hollenbeck, south of Fremont. This is nighttime parking in the, in the staff survey. And this is parked cars on Hollenbeck. You can see there are four on an average night. And those are represented by the blue circles, by block and by side of the street. The unoccupied spaces in the corresponding area, number 115. So there are lots and lots of parking spaces. And moreover, they are available, as I mentioned, on the same side of the street and on the same block as where people are parked. I do want to mention this is within 500 feet. 500 feet, according to national standards, is a two to three minute walk. So not very far from Hollenbeck. However, that's the maximum walk. The farthest space is at 500 feet. The average space is probably going to be half that distance from Hollenbeck. Next slide. And then north of Fremont, the picture is fairly similar. You can see there's one area where, over all the way on the left, where people might have to cross the street to get to the nearest available parking space. But again, for 35 parked cars, there are 227 available parking spaces. This does not take, this does not take account of people potentially moving cars that are parked on Hollenbeck into their own driveways. We know there are many open spaces in the driveways and we know that it's, it's highly likely that many people would choose to move their cars into their own driveways. So this, this, the actual situation would be very likely better than what's shown here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Charlene L., followed by Tiffany A.
Thank you. So you may be wondering why we're talking about Hollenbeck now when Hollenbeck is still two and a half months away. It's because we have so many interesting information that we can't fit it into three minutes on the day of the vote. So we are starting now to tell you about it. So from staff's data, we know that most residents do not park on Hollenbeck. 162 houses on Hollenbeck versus 39 parked cars on Hollenbeck. For the minority who park on the street, John's presentation showed that there's almost 10 times as many unoccupied side street parking than parked cars on Hollenbeck. 352 unoccupied side street spaces versus 39 parked cars. What I'm going to show next is that with high probability, these cars can simply be parked in the driveway, not, they don't have to go to the side street. Because staff did not report driveway data, we collected them ourselves. We counted at night in April on two nights. We found that on average, there are five parking spaces on the property. 75% of the houses have at least one empty driveway space. And in the northernmost block where street parking is the most crowded, 90% of the houses have at least one empty driveway space. Let's look at the northernmost half block where street parking is the most crowded. Remember that on this block, 90% of the houses have at least one empty driveway space. Our counts show that the 27 unoccupied driveway spaces exceed the 11 parked cars on Hollenbeck. Admittedly, it is unknown whether those 11 parked cars belong to the houses with the driveway spaces, the 10% of the houses that have no driveway space. So we looked at side street parking and found that there are also 27 unoccupied side street spaces near the Danforth intersection. With high probability, the side street parking will not be needed by most of these 11 cars as these 11 cars will simply go into the driveway of the 90% of houses that have at least one unoccupied driveway space. One final thought. Sunnyvale does not have a good massive, mass transit system, and I admit that. I have tried myself taking, to take VTA buses, and I have done that. But most times I give up after a little bit of time because it's taking forever. So I instead take Uber or I call my husband to pick me up. Cars are a necessity. I admit that, even for those who are pro-active transportation. Thus, parking is a necessity also. Street parking is a necessity at locations where there isn't enough onsite parking, like at high-density housing areas. But Hollenbeck is not one of these streets. We need to reach our Vision Zero goals and our Bike Share goals by removing all parking on Hollenbeck to install safe bike infrastructure. We can reach those goals, but not otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, my last speaker card in the room is Tiffany A.
Thank you, council. My name is Tiffany Anderson. I'm the president of the Sunnyvale Historical Society. And I'm mostly over at the Sunnyvale Heritage Museum and rubbing shoulders with Laura Babcock and Margaret Lawson, who like kicked my booty into coming out here tonight to tell you about something happening that's really, really cool. We have a California expedition. It's elite athletes that are going to leave from Truckee at the end of the month, like next week. And then they're going to arrive in Auburn in October. And they're taking the trek that actually was lived by the Murphy Townsend Stevenson party that created Sunnyvale. So I wanted to let you know about that. Our YouTube channel actually has more about it. The YouTube channel is, content is a collaboration between Robert Cahy and also this California expedition. We also have a couple of events coming up. We have a vintage in yard sale and we also have a Trails to Rails, which is a huge activity that our coordinator, Kim Thurgate, is putting together. We hope that you'll check out our website and join us for those events. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the last speaker card in the room. Let's go ahead and see if there's any remote speakers wishing to speak under oral communications. City Clerk?
Speaker, Mayor.
Okay, I will close oral communications and move on to our consent calendar. I'll open up the public comments on consent calendar items. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Raise your digital hand now or dial start on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have one speaker card wishing to speak on item 1G, so we'll hold off on 1G. City Clerk, are there any remote participants wishing to speak on consent calendar items?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion. Vice Mayor Sel.
I would like to move to approve consent calendar item 1A to 1F.
Thank you. Councilmember Suni Nivasan.
Second.
Thank you. City Clerk, can you please conduct the vote? Thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Sorry, I'll go ahead and take item 1G now. Do you have any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on item 1G. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Use your raised, use the raised hand feature now or dial start on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. My one speaker card is Zach K.
A lady after racking, racking up huge medical expenses returns home with a change of circumstance. Stepping over the bathtub rim to get a shower is now a precarious endeavor. That 32-inch wide doorway is now a problem. The lady residing in an older Sunnyvale home gets estimates for converting to a walk-in shower and widening the doorway. The water heater resides in the opposite side of the bathroom wall. We all care about the disabled, right? Due to actions of the Sunnyvale City Council, she is devastated to learn that she has to make portions of her home electric-ready irrespective of whether she will be switching to electric appliances anytime in the foreseeable future. It will cost her thousands extra that she doesn't just have floating around, but not drop her emissions. In her case, she needs a panel upgrade. She opts to just take her chances. From the August 12, 2025 hearing, we heard panel upgrades run 10,000 to 20,000, the Susan Park chief building official in the community development department stating, quote, "That is true," close quote. Maybe 10,000 to 20,000 is not much to a city council member, but to someone past their prime earning years, it is a lot. Rebates from Silicon Valley Clean Energy while nice just scratched the surface. Ms. Park, in her leading statement, indicated with the AC-to-heat pump conversion reach code, there were three exceptions to the requirement, one of which was for a panel that cannot support the new load. There is inconsistency on potentially necessitating a panel upgrade with alterations, remodels, and additions, yet recognizing a boundary with it on AC-to-heat pump conversions do not trigger the massive expense. A new panel in of itself does not reduce carbon emissions. It could be a decade or more before an electric appliance comes into the residence. Buying and riding a bicycle, doing some insulation, switching out to double-pane glass, changing over to a hybrid electric car does provide it, of course, available financial resources haven't been consumed elsewhere by a mandate for a future case. If it is good policy to force unrequired panel upgrades, why don't you pay for them?
Thank you. That was my last speaker card in the room. City Clerk, is there anyone remote wishing to speak on item 1G?
No, Mayor.
Councilmember Mellinger, did you have question for this? After, okay. I'll go ahead and close the public comment, close, close the public comment on item 1G. Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Staff, I would appreciate if we, you know, the example, the member of the public came, if we could discuss that for a moment. You know, would widening the doorway and/or installing a walk-in shower trigger a requirement for the, a water heater upgrade or a panel upgrade if it was not, if that renovate, if the water heater happened to be in, in that bathroom?
I, Trudy Ryan, Community Development Director, Councilmember Mellinger, the, it would really depend on a lot of different factors associated. It's kind of hard to answer that without knowing the specifics of if wiring had to be touched, if the, if there was a change out of the, of the water heater itself, if the water heater wasn't being affected and there was nothing in the wall, there might not be anything that would be required at that time. So it might be very specific to that individual case before we could determine if that's a requirement. There are some other exceptions that are available if it's cost prohibitive. So that, that would also be a factor in making that decision.
Are there any exemptions for senior citizens or disabled?
Not specifically in the, in the code. There is the accommodations requirements that we need to consider. And if it's not reasonable, it's not cost-effective. We would not want to require that to assure that the other project, the main project, can get done.
If we approve, reapprove this ordinance tonight, I know that the state has this limit on the ability to change building codes going, coming into force in October. Does that lock us out to making any further changes if we discover problems in the implementation like this?
Anything that reduces the requirements would likely be enabled. I would double-check with the city attorney on that. But we can't add new requirements, but we can take away requirements.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sel.
And in the motion that we had last time that went along with this, it added, could you mention what the delay in the education and that, that part of it entitled?
Absolutely. There are a couple of steps that are still necessary that if the ordinance is adopted this evening, it's not officially effective normally for 30 days. However, in, in the case of an amendment to the building code, it has to be approved by the state. So we do need to send it to the agency at the state that would review that. During this 30-day period, we'll put together the education program that will delay the implementation of the, of the ordinance until we can get that education out there. So there is still some time yet before that ordinance would be effective.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve consent calendar item 1G.
With staff's recommendation.
With staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Mellinger.
Second.
Thank you. City Clerk, can you please, do we need to read the title? Is that correct for the second reading or no?
No, we don't.
Please conduct the vote.
Motion carries, item 1G, seven zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on, let's move on to our regular business. Our first item is item 25-0794. Approve the City of Sunnyvale's 2025 Public Health Goal Report on Water Quality, 2022 through 2024, and direct staff to file the report with the California State Water Resources Control Board Division of Drinking Water. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Mansour Nasr, Assistant Director with the Environmental Services Department. We are here tonight to present the City of Sunnyvale's 2025 Public Health Goals Report as required under the California Health and Safety Code. Every three years, water suppliers are required to evaluate their drinking water against the public health goals as established by the state water board. Sunnyvale conducted more than 69,000 analyses over the last three years, and I'm pleased to report that Sunnyvale's water met all state and federal drinking water standards. This evening, we're asking the council to hold a public hearing, approve the City of Sunnyvale 2025 Public Health Report, and direct staff to file the report with the state water board. The purpose of preparing this report is to identify any chemicals found in our water that exceeded their public health goals and to determine whether further reduction would be technically feasible, economically reasonable, and result in additional health benefits. A public health goal is a non-enforceable guideline. A public health goal for a cancer-causing chemical, for example, is set at a level where there is one additional cancer case in a population of 1 million people drinking eight glasses of water every day for 70 years. The report before you highlights one chemical of interest. Hexavalent chromium are also known as chromium VI. This, this substance is naturally occurring. However, it can also be an industrial byproduct and is recognized as a cancer-causing chemical. The San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, which provides 50% of Sunnyvale's water supply, detected chromium VI at .1 part per billion in its synal plant. It was well below the state maximum level of 10 parts per billion. However, this, it was above the public health goal of .02 parts per billion. So achieving the public health goal would require advanced treatment methods such as ion exchange or reverse osmosis. The estimated cost of these technologies are in the tens of millions of dollars and would provide little to no measurable public health benefit at this time. So in summary, Sunnyvale's drinking water is safe, reliable, and of high quality. We will continue to closely monitor chromium VI and other chemicals and ensure our water system continues to meet or exceed all water quality standards. system continues to meet or exceed all water quality standards. That concludes our presentation. We're available for questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions of staff? I see no questions of staff. Um, so from a monitoring standpoint, and thank you for, for, um, providing information and all the, the, the thousands of samples that you've done over the last three years, have we seen any change? And also from a, from a location standpoint, as far as where we're seeing that increase, is it only one spot within the city? Or have we seen it at more than one sample location?
So, so the, uh, sample we, that was measured at .1 part per billion was actually taken by San Francisco at this treatment plant. It was out of Sunnyvale, but since Sunnyvale gets water from San Francisco, we have to report it to the state. In general, uh, well water doesn't change in quality unless there is a plume of water that's moving towards it. And for Sunnyvale wells, they haven't changed in, at least in the last 12 years, the water quality in the wells.
So, so just as a clar, from a clarification standpoint, that sample that, and I'm going to misname, um, the hexavalent chromium sample wasn't from any of our water directly that we're detecting that or from a monitoring standpoint? I didn't catch that from the staff report.
Yeah, that, that wasn't from our work directly. It was from San Francisco. If San Francisco or Valley Water detects any of these chemicals, since we buy their water, we have to report it.
Understood. I'm, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of, of, we talk about the samples that we take from locations within the city, and did we, did our, did we see any duplication of these numbers from our testing?
No, we, we did not. So what we do is for, we don't sample hexavalent chromium in our distribution system. What we sample in our distribution system is mainly bacteriological. We sample our wells for total chromium, which has chromium III and chromium VI, which is hexavalent. And in February of 2024, uh, we did not find any, uh, we measured total chromium and we found it less than 10. We are following up with, uh, quarterly results over the next year to test particularly for hexavalent chromium.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Sal.
So how often do we check this? And how many places in Sunnyvale do we do this testing?
So we take about 33 samples every week from our distribution system. In addition to that, we do sample our wells, and we sample them for thousands of chemicals, from volatile organic chemicals to inorganic chemicals to general mineral. So we take, like I mentioned, we did about 69, so an average 23,000 analyses a year.
Okay. And then when I read the report, it mentioned that this chemical, the, the, um, the measurement that we measured was many orders below the, um, I mean, it gave us confidence because, um, what we were measuring was very much below, uh, the limit. Is that correct or?
What they detected was below the maximum contaminant limit. The maximum contaminant limit, for example, for hexavalent chromium is 10. San Francisco found it at .1, which is 100 times less than the limit. But the public health goal, which is a little bit confusing, is .02 per square billion, which is five times less than what San Francisco found it.
And in the measurements that we take, all those many thousands of measurements, are we even below that for, um?
So we're not required to, if, if you're looking at, we're below on all the chemicals, but for hexavalent chromium, because we only test our wells, we don't test our distribution system like samples along the street. So we have seven wells in our city that could, could potentially have chromium VI because it's naturally occurring, but we haven't, we, we haven't been able to found it over 10 per square billion.
Okay. So that gives us confidence that, um, that's how, uh, it gives us confidence that we're well below the limit.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next up is Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you very much for your presentation. Couple of quick questions. I recall from the staff report that the, uh, best detection technology for hexavalent chromium has, it kind of taps out around .1 part per billion in terms of its accuracy. Is that correct?
At, uh, .1, you said?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
So essentially what they're detecting in SFPUC is basically at the limit of the accuracy of the existing monitoring systems.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, have we, did we detect in our own well water testing any hexavalent chromium above the pH of .1 part per billion or .02 parts per billion?
No. What we did is when we tested, uh, the, just for clarification, hexavalent chromium limits were set in October of 2024. Hmm. So, but when we tested the well, so we are required to test them over the next year, but when we tested the wells last was February of 2024, before the limit was set. And what we found, we did not find anything above 10 parts per billion for total chromium. And total chromium ionizes into chromium VI and chromium III. Chromium III is good for the human body, but chromium VI is not. So what we measured is total chromium, and it was less than 10.
Okay. And then do we have, from a chemistry background, is there any general, you know, you have a sample of chromium in the water, do you have any idea of what the rough breakdown's going to be between chromium III, chromium VI?
No, we would have to test for that.
Understood. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is Councilmember Lay.
Thank you very much. Um, is the, um, number here of the chromium that we detected, is that an average or is that a maximum?
The .1 detected by the SFPUC is average of three samples. Actually, the average was .085, but we rounded it up to .1.
Okay. So there is no, there is none that is over the limit as far as we know?
It's not over the maximum contaminant limit.
Yeah.
The enforceable one. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And just as a follow-up, so from the SFPUC report, um, I'm assuming because they basically provide water all the way up the peninsula or all the way down the peninsula, um, every, every city would have the similar kind of red flag in their reports from a water quality standpoint?
Correct. Everybody is going to have it.
Sure. And I'm just hoping that from a city standpoint, we do, whether or not it's once a year or once every two years or something, um, not to give you operational directive, but, but there's a concept of conceivable contamination along that, along that water line before it gets into the city. And I understand we were mainly testing from a bacterial standpoint, but there's questions, at least in my mind, about the water that's being delivered into the city, either SFPUC or Valley Water, and we would test, I'd say, at the source, um, just to at least do a spot check at the source, you know, once a year, several times a year, just to make sure that our results match what the SFPUC is saying. When, when they're reporting that, are they reporting at the source in San Francisco? Are they reporting it along the line? Just trying to get a better idea of what they are reporting to us.
So what they are reporting to us is the water that's coming out of their treatment plants. Uh, in addition to that, as I mentioned, and not to add any complexity, is they found it at .1 at what we call sunol plant, but that water is mixed with the hachchi water. And we get about our, uh, so it's mixed 15% sunol, 85% hachchi. So it's also reduced. They do test it at the plant, and they're required by law to give us these results, and we report them annually to the state.
Okay.
If, if I may, I'm from managing the Courtland Environmental Services Director. Um, the public health goals, um, they're set by the state of California, and the way I would look at those is, especially as it come, as it relates to drinking water, is they are good to have goals. There's some, you know, something to shoot for, um, but what we're really concerned all the time is the maximum contaminant levels, because those are the levels that actually set the safe drinking water for, by EPA and by our water board. So those are the ones, if any of these chemical levels get closer to the, the maximum contaminant level, that's when we get really concerned. And that's what we're really monitoring for and testing for in all our samples. So in this case, I mean, we are so far below, and it's just basically a sample that only constitutes about 15% of our drinking water, um, I wouldn't be worried about it at all.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. That looks like all the questions from council. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Please submit a speaker card to the City Clerk. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on the members participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards in the room. Uh, City Clerk, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, first participant, uh, under the name Stephen M. Stephen, you've been unmuted and now have three minutes to address the City Council.
Hello again. This is Steve, uh, talking. So I've been learning a lot about, um, water and studying things in the water board and stuff like that, and I think the scientists here in the environmental department are quite good. So I have no concerns at all about drinking water quality, but I have concerns about are the stormwater issues. And it's really odd that some of these environmental service folks have been in the courtroom testifying and supporting removing EPA clean water restrictions on the tributaries to the bay. Uh, so I think, you know, some of your actions in court undermine the credibility and, you know, authority of your environmental services department because you continue to litigate this lawsuit. And you're making comments like there are no outflows during the summertime, and I go to Fair Oaks Park, and what do I see? I see outflows. So what does it mean when there's outflows going into the bay during the summertime and you guys are testifying in court that there are no outflows during the summertime into San Francisco Bay? But, you know, how does that affect the credibility of your great scientists? Because I think you have great scientists. I think they do a great job. They deliver clean water, but your litigation in court is really undermining the respect and authority of your scientists. So this all went to court. You spent four weeks in court. You took a lot of your director's time sitting in court, and then immediately after you file a motion to reconsider with no new evidence, making a mockery of the judge. I mean, you filed immediately a motion to reconsider just right after the judge ruled. I mean, it's just incredible with no new evidence, and you all sit there like, that's okay? I mean, you're just like the federal government making a mockery of the judiciary. The judge hasn't ruled yet, yet you have approved an appeal. And that appeal is yet again, they take more time away from the environmental services department, and it's going to further undermine the credibility of your scientists. So yes, they're great scientists, they deliver clean water, but your litigation is beyond appeal, and you have no public input. You have three, four, or five times tried to remove EPA protections, clean water protections from the bay. You keep repeating the same thing. What does it mean when you keep repeating doing the same thing? You expect to get a different result? You expect the judge to respect you when you approve an appeal before he's filed a decision? I wrote your letter. Of course, we cannot comment. You cannot comment. It's been in the dark for seven years. Seven years without any public discussion. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Well, that was the final remote public speaker on this agenda item.
Okay. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I move staff recommendation, alternative one.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sal.
A second.
Thank you. To your motion.
I am delighted to see this year's report and that Sunnyvale's drinking water remains safe and high quality. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sal.
I appreciate the data and thoroughness that you take, uh, with the drinking water and all the tests that you do, the many thousands of tests. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll be supporting this motion. City Clerk, can you please conduct the vote? Thank you. Um, our next item is item 25 dash 0767, adopt a resolution amending the city's civil service rules and regulations. Is there a staff report?
There is. Good evening. How are you? Tina Murphy, Director of Human Resources. Nice to have a chance to talk to you this evening, Mayor and Council, regarding some proposed changes to the civil service rules and regulations. Okay. Thank you for the presentation. So the civil service rules and regulations were last updated or amended in 2016. They were actually established in May of 1960 to ensure that we have fair and impartial administration of our civil service rules. And the civil service rules are actually to identify how we hire employees, how they navigate through in terms of promotional opportunities, um, and if there's a disciplinary action that needs to be taken. So that is kind of the, the foundation for those civil service rules and for, related to employees who are part of what we call the civil service. Um, the policies need to be clear. They have to be comprehensive. They need to be aligned with best practices. Um, like I indicated, they haven't been updated for a number of years. So we have gone through kind of a major rewrite of some of these areas and streamlined and simplified the language wherever we could, um, made it gender neutral, similar to our other policies that we're updating. And, um, based on changes to the law, changes to policy, things that have, um, been updated in the city over the last few years, you'll see kind of these presentation, um, the, the items that are, uh, before you tonight. And we did present a very similar presentation to our personnel board in May of this year. Okay. So in terms of the steps that we've taken to get here, um, I have an amazing group of human resources staff who have been updating and monitoring adjustments that are needed to our, um, policies and procedures as we go through. So we have made some recommendations of, uh, changes to, um, be consistent with what our past practices are, what the laws changes have been, um, and then we provided those to our executive leadership team for them to review. They provided additional clarification where it was needed, areas that might be problematic for their staff or things that, um, employees didn't quite understand. And then we took those changes to the bargaining units and went through what we call the meet and confer process. This allows the bargaining units the opportunity to review the proposed changes, make additional modifications that they would like, um, and have discussions about any of the proposed changes that we would like to, to make. And then from there, we propose them to the personnel board. They did provide us with recommendation for some additional language changes, which we're, um, on the, the draft that is provided to you this evening. So I'm going to hit the highlights. Um, as we go through the amendments, I'm going to direct you to the applicable section numbers, which are listed on the left-hand side of the slides. One change that you'll notice throughout the document is that we clarified which city employees are considered to be regular, um, rather than what we used to call permanent city employees. No one's really permanent, but it's a regular city employee means that there are benefited staff, um, that are hired through a civil service process. Uh, there's some additional changes. We, uh, where possible, we've added the city, city manager or designee, um, or designated representative to allow flexibility into making changes without requiring input necessarily from the, um, city manager. And instead of department head, we've used the term director. Whoops. Okay. So some of the main changes that are here, uh, the classifications for assistant city manager, deputy city manager, and senior assistant city attorney were not, um, included in, or were not excluded by the civil service rules. So we added those classifications because they are relatively new. They've been added since 2016. Um, so those classifications are not part of what we consider to be the civil service, so they are not applicable to those. Uh, the reasonable accommodation, this is updated to reflect changes to the law, um, best practices that are specifically included in our city policies. Employment of relatives, this is a little bit updated. Um, that's an epitome policy. In the past, it had been, um, it's kind of specific to the city manager and to council. We have expanded that a little bit, that the city will not appoint a relative to a city manager, um, the mayor, council member, and the applications won't be accepted from a council member or board of commission within two years. a council member or board of commission within two years of your term. So for those of you who are on the council this evening, after you've completed your term, you will have to wait two years to apply for a city position. But we encourage all applications at any time, recruiting at all times. So please do fill out those application forms. A little bit of the ability for employees to apply for transfer opportunities, that's something that we worked with the bargaining units about. And then solicitation of applications. We don't really do a lot of advertising on a bulletin board, per se. So there has been some modifications to how we advertise. Most of that is through social media or through the internet, less paper copies of our advertisements are going out. Disqualifications, this is a unique one where applications are accepted for certain continuous recruitments. So public safety officer in training, dispatcher in training, those are open most of the year. And as we have a number of applications who meet qualifications, we will have a testing process. And so there is a possibility for someone who does not pass the exam to reapply right away. So what we wanted to do is to allow them a little bit of opportunity to gain more experience, get a little additional education or experience behind them before they go into the next recruitment cycle. So we are requesting that they not be considered for reapplication within three months of their continuous recruitments. And then also allowing individuals who violate our harassment, discrimination, or retaliation policy during the examination process to be excluded from any consideration for hire. Military credits, this is to expand what we provide military credit for veterans and active military members. In the past, it was only for veterans preference points. We do want to provide the veterans' points also for people who are active members of the military. And then any candidate who is removed from an eligibility list due to either not meeting qualifications or going through something else. We had a provision in the current rules that would not allow city employees to be removed from a list, which could tie up the ability to re-recruit if we were unsuccessful in filling the position the first time. And then, again, we have communicated these changes to the bargaining units. We've added some additional language regarding certification and what that looks like to provide some additional clarity there. In the probationary appointments, we've identified that a probationary period will occur if there is a casual employee. So that is a casual employees who we hire throughout the summer or throughout the year for as needed kind of employment opportunities. They're temporary in nature. So a lot of our recreation staff that are hired, libraries, pages that are throughout the year, or a term limited employee, they would have to go through a probationary period if they were hired into a regular classified city position. And then we changed the probationary period from pay periods to months of service. And that's consistent with what changes we made when we went live with our new Oracle HRAS. And we've added some detail on how those probationary periods may be extended, especially if there is an employee who has leave of absence during their probationary period. It extends the probation by the same length of time that they're on a leave. And then evaluations are required throughout the performance of their annual performance reviews, as well as during the probationary period itself. There's some information in the proposed rules, which regard reinstatement after resignation. We've clarified that. Similarly, we've clarified changes if there's a reinstatement, if there happens to be a reduction in force, and reinstatement from military leave. So those three provisions have been updated. And then finally, the last couple of kind of major changes, the classification descriptions, the classification specification was what we call them. It's a job description. They are available on the city's website. It does include some specific data, their job class title, the description of what they do, summary of the essential functions, a statement of the education experience, knowledge, skills, and abilities, and other requirements or desirable qualifications. Those components would be included in all of our job descriptions. And then if there's a disciplinary action, we did add in an additional potential way for an employee to have a disciplinary action, and that is regarding failure to meet or maintain the minimum qualifications of the position, or failure to report after a leave of absence. So if someone does not come to work, that could be a potential reason for discipline. That concludes my staff report. My recommendation, staff's recommendation and personnel board's recommendation is to approve the amended civil service rules and regulations. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. First up is Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Director. And I have one question, and this is the edgiest of edge cases. Pages nine to 10 of Attachment One, on the definition of a relative excluded by the anti-nepotism rules. Previously, a grandparent-grandchild relationship would have been excluded, and it no longer is. And I'm curious as to why. I recognize that that is unlikely, but it is plausible.
It is plausible. We do not see that happen very often, that a grandchild or a grandparent would be in a reporting structure. It could happen. It's more often than not that it would be a child or other family relative.
Was there some change in state law or definition of relative that necessitated this?
No, we had a change in how we define relative for like our bereavement leave. That was primarily what it related to.
Interesting. So wait, grandparents are no longer, grandparent-grandchild is no longer eligible for bereavement leave?
Grandparents and grandchildren are eligible for bereavement leave. We did not include it in this. It does not happen very often. We were certainly able to add it back in if you're interested.
I would be inclined to include that in a future motion, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is Councilmember Cisneros.
Yes, thank you for bringing these updates here. These are really important things to make sure that we're clear on. I know this is going to affect a lot of employees and want to make sure that we're a really good place to work. On the slide where it mentions disqualification based on harassment, discrimination, and retaliation policy during examinations, is... So I want to kind of understand what that is. Would that apply also to, say, social media posts that you're making on your personal accounts? Or what kind of situation is this looking to address?
I can give you a little bit of an example. There have been examination processes where candidates are going through and they are inappropriate with other staff members.
Okay, well, this is a really good clarification to make and really good flexibility for the city to, again, make sure that this is a good place to work for everyone, because that does not sound like a situation where that would be true. So that's great. In the extension of a probationary period after a leave of absence, would that be generally proportionate to the amount of leave taken? Or are there more specific guidelines around that?
It would be proportionate to the amount of leave taken. So if someone was gone for either vacation, or they had a work-related injury, or even a personal injury on their own, their probationary period would be extended by the same amount. So if they were gone for six weeks, their probationary period would be extended by six weeks without having to come through a variety of different kind of hoops and hurdles in order to make that happen.
That makes sense. Yeah, the slide says the probationary period may be extended. Are there cases where it would not be?
A lot of times, we will consider if someone is out, let's say that they are pregnant during their probationary period, a lot of times that we'll go ahead and allow that if they've demonstrated during their probationary period that the time that they were there, that they were able to perform all the duties of the job, that could be an opportunity where they would not necessarily have an extension to their probation.
Okay, that's really interesting and helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is Councilmember Chang.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, Tina. On the nepotism change, I know in some other cities, there's been some issues with employment of people in relationships. And I'm wondering if that can be considered in the future, maybe not for now. But, and also just great to see some of the work the Personnel Board does, because we are not always seeing what they're doing. Thank you.
That's a great question. We did not consider personal relationships outside of either domestic partnership or family, like blood relation. In our previous nepotism policy was highlighted that it was a blood relative, not necessarily by marriage. So the future consideration for including relationships is something that we could absolutely look at. We typically do not collect that data. So they would have to self-identify that they're in a working relationship and also in a personal relationship.
Thank you, Councilmember. And not that... So you mentioned the Personnel Board, and normally they kind of operate outside of our purveyance. That being said, you said that their comments were kind of included in the update as far as the changes here? Or did they just basically approve without comment? Just a question.
That's a great question. The Personnel Board, just so that for those who are not familiar, the Personnel Board handles disciplinary appeals. It is something that does not come before council. So if an employee is being disciplined, they have the opportunity to go to five members of the public and present a case of why they should not be disciplined. So if they want to have their discipline either reduced or overturned, that's the reason for it. It is kind of a private personnel board and commission, so unfortunately, there's not a lot of visibility into it. That being said, they did go through with kind of a fine-tooth comb and made a lot of edits and recommendations to streamline the language and clarify it. Many of them, we actually took into consideration and added into the version that you see before you tonight.
I appreciate that. And I think in this specific case for future, if things are coming, I understand their Personnel Board-specific decisions don't get updated to us. That being said, I do think that if they're giving feedback on, let's say, city code or operation, I do think getting their minutes and getting help, getting us, you know, much like we see for the other commissions, getting a summary of what their proceedings are is useful for us. So I'll just say that for future note. But didn't, you know, I kind of skipped over that when I was reading. I focused on the wording and kind of the edits and didn't capture that Personnel Board portion of the RTC until you mentioned it here. And I do think, just for future note, if they're reviewing something, let's say, that's not confidential at the end of the day, or I do think that that has value to report to us. But I'll just leave that out there.
Great. They did not have any substantive changes. It was more of clarification for the language that we've used.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Chang's comments rang a bell for me. Do we have policies on the books regarding relationships between supervisors and subordinates?
Between supervisors and subordinates, yes. If it is a direct reporting relationship, there should not be a personal relationship.
Direct reporting relationship can skip levels, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I am a tad concerned that that's not included in the nepotism policy, but that is also not something we are going to hash out tonight. I wonder what a vehicle would be to ask staff to explore that just a little bit further without turning this into a very major project?
That could be handled probably through the city manager directing us to change the policy, not necessarily the civil service rules. The nepotism policy is specifically related to employment of relatives, not related to personal relationships that are not legally defined.
All right, I can't... Thank you, Councilmember. I can, we can take a look. And there's an administrative policy, and I don't recall off the top of my head, regarding relationships within departments that is defined by the city manager operationally, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. So that's something that I could share that policy with council, what that policy is and what it states.
Okay. If staff wanted to spend an hour or two looking into, you know, is there anything we need to add to your grade, but I don't think that needs to be included in a motion. I think it would be great if you could share that policy. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Sal.
So it says in the staff report that comments were provided by the labor groups, SEA and SMA. Were those comments taken into consideration in this, where they are?
Absolutely. We had a number of meetings with bargaining units who were interested in having meet and confer conversations with us. In particular, one of the areas that was of interest for SEA Local 21 was the transfer opportunities and to kind of open that up and make it a little bit more formalized and include that. So there were several areas that you see before you, that we did have a lot of conversation about, some of their proposed changes we've made, some did not make it in.
Okay. Thank you for confirming with them. And were those the only two that you conferred with, those two labor groups?
They were the only two that requested to meet.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That was the last of questions from council. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, followed by our remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards in the room. City clerk, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion. Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Let me just pull up my screen real quick. I am going to move alternative one with the following change, that in Section 12.05, staff add restrictions barring grandparent and grandchild relationships.
Thank you.
Actually, I'll wait for a second. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sal.
A second?
Thank you. To your motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is a necessary update. I do think that while it is unlikely to have a grandparent-grandchild relationship, it is plausible and it's worth maintaining that prohibition. As I was making the motion, another question entered my mind as it is now, as it's Pride Month. Mother, father, aunt, uncle, et cetera, are gender-specific terms. It is plausible for a non-binary person to be in an analogous relationship. And would the civil service code cover that?
So if you're asking whether parent, child, sibling, yes.
Okay, I would recommend, I will not make this part of my motion, but maybe run that by legal and make sure you don't need to update anything there.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And yeah, I appreciate, you know, giving staff a little flexibility here as opposed to trying to wordsmith from the dais, as we've learned is always a question. I am happy to support your motion and know that city manager and the director of human relations will, or human resources will deal with these issues. With that, city clerk, please conduct the vote.
Seven zero.
Thank you. And we'll move on to item 25-0828, Introduce an ordinance declaring the need for the Sunnyvale Industrial Development Authority, declaring that the Sunnyvale Industrial Development Authority shall function and find that this action is exempt from SEQA. Is there a staff report? One second.
Mr. Mayor and council, Matt Paul and your finance director. So I think Tim started the meeting with a little finance humor. So you may wonder, I may become close to closing the meeting with a little finance humor. You may wonder why the finance director is before you, asking permission to create an industrial development authority. Well, the answer to that question is a little complicated and a little interesting. So as you may well be aware, we have a smart station that requires all of its major capital equipment to be replaced. You approved a contract a couple of months ago for a contractor to go ahead and do that. We plan on going to market at the end of October to sell bonds to finance most of that project. So as we were doing the planning for that project, we plan on utilizing the Sunnyvale Financing Authority to issue that debt. And the Sunnyvale Financing Authority is a joint powers authority that's composed of the city and the successor to the redevelopment agency of Sunnyvale. Well, with any luck, our city attorney will pull a rabbit out of her hat and finally take care of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency once and for all. And we got a little concerned that, hey, when we're talking to investors, we're going to do a public offering for this debt. When we talk to investors, they may be concerned about, hey, you know, what's going to happen with the Sunnyvale Financing Authority? So we thought to ourselves, okay, if we need to find another legal entity to take the successor agency's place, what would be a good option? And we did have a couple of options. We talked about the housing authority. We didn't think that was a good fit. We could have gone with the state entity. There's a state industrial development authority called the California State Community Development Association Authority. Association Authority, but that would have introduced a third party into what we want to do. So we thought an industrial development authority may be a good economic development tool that we may use at some point. There's a number of them around the state and local governments use. Interestingly enough, one of the main powers that they have are to act as a conduit issuer for industries so that that may access tax-exempt bond rates, which are cheaper than market rates. So again, taking care of two issues, one, taking care of our JPA for the long term, and two, allowing the city to have another economic development tool in its toolkit, we thought that was a good option for you. So I apologize for all of the items, starting with this one in front of you that you'll see over the next month or so, but we think that was a good solution to our problem. So happy to answer questions, talk more about it.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? I see none. Sure, okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Raise your digital hand now or dial *999 telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call members of public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no cards in the room. City Clerk, are there any remote participants wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion. Vice Mayor Sell.
I would like to motion to support the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Mellinger.
Second.
Thank you. To your motion?
I appreciate staff having the foresight to look into this and comparing the different mechanisms and weighing the pluses and minuses and providing that in staff report and thinking about this. And we want to put our city in a sound financial position so that we can continue to provide good services for our residents. So thank you for researching this and moving forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'm supportive of this, definitely having all the tools in our toolkit from a financial standpoint is important and having the foresight to realize that with any luck, we'd lose the successor agency by the end of the year, or let's say, within a year would be a positive thing. With that, city clerk, please read the ordinance title and conduct the vote.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sunnyvale declaring the need for the Sunnyvale Industrial Development Authority and declaring that the Sunnyvale Industrial Development Authority shall function and finding that the action is exempt from the California Venomal Quality Act. And with that, you may now vote. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our last item of the evening, item 25-0843, appeal of commission separation in consideration of reinstatement to the Housing and Human Services Commission. Is there a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is David Carnehan, the city clerk. This report is to inform council of a separation from a city commission and to request direction regarding an appeal of the separation. Housing and Human Services Commissioner Lisa Riviere.
One moment, David. Are we sure that that's actually being broadcast? I'm just double checking. I can barely hear.
Okay, is, am I a little louder now?
Yes.
Okay. So David Carnehan, the city clerk, this report is to inform council of a separation from a city commission and request direction regarding an appeal of the separation. Housing and Human Services Commissioner Lisa Riviere has exceeded the percentage of unexcused absences from regular meetings over the last 12 months. This included two unexcused absences out of seven regular meetings, or 29% held June 2024 through July 2025. Council policy 7.2.19, related to boards and commissions, states that when a member's unexcused absences over a 12-month period exceeds 25%, the city clerk shall declare the seat vacant. I declared the seat vacant August 5th. The policy also states that this type of a declaration of vacancy is appealable to the city council. Lisa Riviere filed an appeal on August 17th. So this report provides council a few options of how to address the appeal. Should council choose alternative one to accept the appeal and reinstate Riviere to the Housing and Human Services Commission, they'll resume serving on the commission. With alternative two, council would reject the appeal and the resulting vacancy would be promoted with the current recruitment process for November appointments. Alternative three allows council to provide other direction to staff. And then also with noting that a supplemental staff memorandum was added to the staff report communicating that a similar vacancy was declared for Housing and Human Services Commissioner Jim Davis, who similarly exceeded the percentage of unexcused absences over a 12-month period. Davis has also filed an appeal, and that'll be included on your September 9th meeting agenda. This concludes the staff report, and I'm ready to address questions from council.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff? Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Has Commissioner Riviere was reappointed in the Q2 recruitment cycle? Has Commissioner Riviere missed any meetings since July 1, when her reappointment came into force? Because my understanding is the attendance period being considered is July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. Is that correct?
So that's the reported attendance period. We typically, in the clerk's office, get attendance reports on a semi-annual basis, so I don't have records of attendance for the period starting July 1 of this year through today.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Srinivasan.
These kinds of situations, was it handled previously? Any thoughts on that? Any reinstatement or appeals?
So in the six years that I've been here, we haven't had any board or commission members that have exceeded, there's two provisions. One is charter-based, that if a commissioner misses three regular meetings in a row with unexcused absences, they are removed from their seat, and that's not appealable. This provision is based in the council policy, and that, since I've been here, we haven't had any commissioners exceed this percentage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cisneros.
Yeah, thank you. So the separation is due to unexcused absences, and I read her appeal statement, and so it seems like there were some things going on with her family, and I wanted to ask, get some clarity around why these were not excused absences.
So one of the pieces related to whether an absence is excused or unexcused is if the staff liaison and the chair are aware of the justification for the absence and why it would be excused or unexcused. An absence becomes excused because of the commissioner or board member communicating why they're going to be absent, and it falls, if their absence is going to fall under one of the categories outlined in the council policy, then the commission during the meeting says, you know, typically the chair will state, you know, commissioner so-and-so's absence is excused, are there any objections? And if there are none, it gets recorded as excused. If, in a situation where the chair or staff liaison are, you know, unsure why someone is absent, it's not possible for the commission to note the absence as excused.
Okay, that's a really helpful clarification about what happened in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is Councilmember Lay.
Thank you. Similarly to Councilmembers Cisneros' question, could you please help me understand what the criteria are for an excuse, what makes an absence excused other than the chair knows about it and folks vote? Are there other guidelines?
Yes, let me pull up the council policy so I give you the full list.
Thank you.
So the criteria for when a board or commission could consider an absence is excused, the justifications are a death in the family, personal illness, board or commission-related business, personal leave limited to one occurrence per fiscal year for boards or commissions that meet monthly, an emergency, or a decision by a member's supervisor in employment or required military service, federal or family, sorry, federal or state family leave. So I think the absences, my observation of when unexcused absences have typically occurred in Sunnyvale is scenarios where potentially the absence would have fallen under one of these categories, but there was a lack of communication to where the chair and staff liaison could not facilitate the absence being excused.
I see. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Chang.
Thank you, city clerk. So if the commissioner is reappointed, would their attendance record be reset, or how does that work? Or does it reset from when she was reappointed to the commission?
Typically not. The way the policy is stated, right, it's looking at 25% of regularly scheduled meetings over any consecutive 12-month period. And so while there may be a new term, they're really still a commissioner that whole time. They're kind of, they're reappointed, so their attendance doesn't reset with a new term.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to state two things for the record. First, I just pulled up the video of the July Housing and Human Services Commission meeting, and Commissioner Riviere was present. There has not yet been an August meeting. The second is that when Commissioner Riviere applied for reappointment, I spoke with her directly on the phone about the issue of attendance, and she assured me that the issues of attendance that she had over the past year would not be repeated. And I wanted to share that, I did have that conversation with her for the public record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Sell.
So if the communication had, for the explanation, for the absence had happened before the meeting, then if a reason of illness was presented, then it would have been excused. But if the meeting occurred and then the explanation was given, it would still be unexcused. Is that correct?
Yes, although there are instances where especially some of these types of justifications for an excused absence, I mean, in an emergency, right, you typically want to deal with the emergency and then think about your staff liaison and your chair after the fact. So if there is communication with the chair and staff liaison, you know, potentially soon after the meeting, but before the meeting minutes are approved, it is common for commissions when they approve meeting minutes to, you know, say we moved the minutes as approved, but we would like to state that such-and-so commissioner's absence is excused.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Raise your digital hand now or dial *999 telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of public participating in person first, followed by remote participants. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards in the room. City Clerk, do we have any remote participants wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. I did have one, actually did remember there's one question. City Clerk, Commissioner Riviere, she ended up being appointed as vice chair, so showing her interest in this last, in the last July meeting, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to reconfirm her interest from that standpoint in not just being a commissioner, but being part of the chair/vice chair model. With that, Vice Mayor Sell.
Can I make comment, or do I make a motion?
Make a motion.
Do any questions?
No more questions?
I would like to make a motion to support alternative one, which is to accept the appeal and reinstate Lisa Riviere to the Housing and Human Services Commission to a term ending in June 30, 2029.
Thank you. Councilmember Cisneros.
Second.
Thank you. To your motion?
Okay. So I am the council liaison to the Housing and Human Services Commission. So I was there when Commissioner Riviere, who has a PhD, was appointed by her colleagues to be vice chair. So clearly, her colleagues expect her leadership to make her vice chair. She also, I served on the Housing and Human Services Commission before coming on council, and I believe Commissioner Riviere took my place, or one of the empty places near when I was leaving the commission about two and a half years ago. And so I've watched her over the years, and I've seen her be prepared for the meetings and participate actively and have thoughtful comments. And I think that what happened was unfortunate, and as she, Councilmember Mellinger, spoke to her, and she likely will not do that again, unexcused without communication, likely.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Cisneros.
Yes, thank you. When looking at all the facts of the situation, what I ultimately see at the core of it is a leader in our community who has undergone great personal hardship. And in those situations, sometimes your real life happens outside of city hall. And when that happens, especially to somebody who has demonstrated leadership and great competency and has provided very valuable input to the city and can very clearly demonstrate that this is, you know, a situational matter, I see no reason to deprive our residents of what she has to offer to the commission. I thank her for, you know, appealing this. This is a vulnerable and tough thing to do, to speak about publicly. I feel for that, and I also appreciate that we have this process to evaluate it and these general policy guidelines to follow. So, you know, we don't often hear this, but I think that this is, it's a very appropriate decision to approve her appeal.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I am grateful to Commissioner Riviere for her service to the city. I was aware of these attendance issues when I voted to reappoint her. That is why I had the conversation with her. I would not have voted to reappoint her if I did not have every confidence that she would be attending regularly going forward. And, you know, I think that in this case, given the extenuating circumstances of a death in the family and ill loved one, et cetera, that leniency is warranted without prejudice to any other possible future cases that might come before us. I respectfully urge my colleagues, I vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm happy to support this motion. I, you know, I reached out to the commissioner after finding out about the process and trying to make sure, and encouraging her to appeal the decision to us. You know, it is something on my nine years on council that I had not seen before and was happy to, you know, happy to encourage her because definitely for those that have been liaison to that commission or seen her come speak here, she has a passion for what that commission is doing, and having council conceivably and city staff losing that feedback and hearing from that advocate within that commission on how the city should be working, to me would have been a big loss. So I was happy that the encouragement worked out, that she was able, that she was willing to present her case to us and thinking, and ultimately, I think granting that appeal is in the best interest to the city, and I think it's the right thing to do based upon her situation. So happy to support this motion. With that, city clerk, please conduct the vote.
The motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next up are councilmember reports on activities from intergovernmental committee assignments. Anything from council? Councilmember Lay.
Yes, thank you. We, at the VTA PAC meeting last week, there were, we awarded grants that had been applied for by various cities through the county, and they were all for microtransit. I hope that we in the future are able to seek out this grant at Sunnyvale, as we look forward to funding our as we look forward to funding our, our microtransit program. There was some lively debate about how the grant funding should be distributed because a lot of them were very similar in nature. Equity was a, was a factor, and I think it was one of the reasons that some very similar programs didn't make the cut, but some other ones did. We also discussed asking VTA, the VTA board, to take a look at microtransit because this is something that everyone in the county is, to some extent, investing in and having some broader oversight over that, instead of everyone going their own way. The PAC thought that would be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Vice Mayor Sal.
I'm on the VTA board, and I'm also serving on a committee, the congestion committee. So we also reviewed the awards that were awarded, innovation awards. And those innovation awards mostly went to microtransit, cities doing microtransit. So it's nice that we're in good, Sunnyvale got an award last year of a microtransit. And so I asked in that meeting, would VTA in the future consider helping cities fund microtransit? And the staff mentioned that they, they were thinking about it in the future, but not for that grant because that was for innovation and pilots and stuff like that. So at least, as councilmember Lay said, it's on the radar, and thank you for elevating that. And thank you for our staff communicating with VTA. I know over the years, when I've talked to VTA, they said that they have good communications with the Sunnyvale staff. So thank you.
Thank you, vice mayor. Last for IGRs. Next up are non-agenda items and comments. Councilmember Srinivasan.
City clerk, can you bring up that slide? There will be a community event. This is organized, called Sunnyvale Heritage Day. This is on 6th of September at the library. This is organized by Meera Mishra, who is a girl scout, who is working on, this is a gold project. This is a scout project, so I would urge everybody to attend this. This will be awesome. From what I remember, this is the first time Heritage Day will be celebrated. So please attend. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Seeing no others. City manager, do you have any non-agenda items or comments?
Yes, just briefly, we are less than a month away from the state of the city, which is always an exciting event. I do want to remind council that last year, the attorney general opined that we have to open a public hearing and hear public comment at that event. And so we actually have a council meeting scheduled for 8:30 a.m., and it would be wonderful if I could get a quorum at that time, even though the event starts a little bit later. So that's just a little reminder about the odd start time and then the gap. We are planning some refreshments for those who arrive at that time and then are around until the beginning of the actual event. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mellinger.
Just very briefly, I unfortunately will not be able to make the state of the city this year as I will be in France for a friend's wedding. I hope you all have a lovely time. Thank you.
That will be the shortest council meeting.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 9:23 p.m. Thanks to everyone who attended. Have a good evening.